We're waiting, Casey Jenkins called me and said he'd be here by 2:15 coming from out of town. However, does not mean that we can't go ahead and get started and get some of the house cleaning items out of the way, Kevin. So, we appreciate you taking your time to, again, host, uh, to lead this town council retreat. You did the job two years ago. Appreciate it.
Well, thanks so much. I appreciate it. Should I run from here? Run to Jenna from, are you good? Do you have any other business to do today?
No, no, we don't have any other business.
Okay. I'm not going to run from here. I'll run anywhere. All right. So, thank you, Mayor, and appreciate you all asking me to facilitate with you today. I always learn so much when I have an opportunity to work with you. I'm hoping that we have an agenda that's designed.
We have a seat right over here. And we'll get one more for Casey.
I'll get another one for Casey. Set up right here. There we go. Okay. Everybody's got a seat now. Perfect. So, I've had the chance to work with you all a lot, but I know as a new member, I haven't had a chance to work with you as much, but I'm the director of the New River Valley Regional Commission, and our organization provides technical assistance to local governments in the newer valley. Retreat facilitation is one of the things that we offer, and I think it helps us make sure that we have programs in our organization that align and support the work that local governments are dealing with. And as you've seen, Jennifer Wiltsey in front of the council talk about housing, economic development planning, working with the town on the A R C investment for our market project. The lessons will help communities access funding outside the area to help support projects and find a bunch of the local cost. But we have really broad enabling legislation that our organization can help local governments do anything that we're asked to do. So, it takes us a lot of fun places. We've been working on the Passage Rail project for a long time, and we've got good news recently, a change of location for that. It's really exciting. And that may come into our discussion today, so I'm glad you go and talk about projects. But, so, I've worked with Randy and Andrew on crafting an agenda for you all today that goes through a few things. We'll start off with an icebreaker here in just a minute. I'll walk you through our agenda, and it's more about getting to know you. And then, we have decision-making styles. This is an exercise that we did in the county retreat, I believe, and to different directions. We'll go through that here in just a little bit as well. Good for you all to understand how each person approaches decision-making within groups and your natural tendencies. And then, we'll do an exercise that we call card storming, and it's one of those flickies that are there in front of you, those little green things you're calling, where I ask you, for the retreat, to be thinking about the three to five things that you all think the town needs to be focusing on to advance the future of the community over the next five years. That's going to really inform the latter part of our discussion today. So, we'll do this alignment. We'll put them up on the wall. Did they pick the wall nicely? So, we'll see what your ideas are and put them up there. And what we've done in designing this retreat agenda is seeking where the priorities align or introduce new areas within Destination 2022, which is the strategic plan for the town. And so, your ideas are going to drive some of that, and then we'll have a discussion about capital projects, which is a good chunk of our time. But this document is extremely robust. It's very, very impressive. I don't know any local government that has a strategic plan this thorough. As Randy and Andrew and I were talking about how to update this, it's a very labor-intensive effort that council went through with staff. They thought, what's a truncated version of doing that? Because content in here is still good. What's ways to update it that align with what you all see or currently? And that's what we designed today to be about. And that's kind of the alignment check. We'll talk about goals and whether they fit with existing goals. And then, capital project discussion. So, staff can get in front of you all some of the big things that they're seeing, and you all can ask clarifying questions of those projects, and that's kind of our day. Does that sound good to you? Yeah. Okay. Good. Well, around to your front of the table. Got some digits for you. You've probably seen those before as well, so people think better when you've got stuff in your hands. I've got some pipe cleaners I'll put out here a little bit as well. Some people like to build things with those. We don't have to be that true. We bring them in at the end of the day to kind of fit in our break room, and it's pretty cool to see the stuff that people make at the end of the day. So, I'll put some pipe cleaners out in just a little bit. But your icebreaker, I want you all to do it. Use your flickies for the first time. And the way these flickies work is that they stick to each other. There's static electricity, so when you pull one, you gotta really run between your fingers to make sure they pull apart. And it's hit one for each, but yeah, two things I want you to identify. On one flicky, put your favorite place in the town of Christiansburg. Your favorite place in the town of Christiansburg. And then, your second flicky.
It can be your home.
It could be your home.
Okay.
And then, your second flicky is your favorite place outside of Christiansburg.
How far outside?
Anywhere, anywhere could be, Arctic Circle. So, you know, it could be anywhere that's outside the community. If your favorite place is in the community and your favorite place outside of the community. While you're doing that, I'm going to get some pipe cleaners out. So, favorite place in Christiansburg on one slicky, favorite place outside of Christiansburg on a second slicky. I'll get them in just a second here. Get some of these big cleaners out. Worked well. All right. Now, we're ready for some of these places. On what are your two favorite places?
Okay. So, favorite place in town, I choose the Huckleberry Park and Trail. And then, outside of town, I was going to say, I wrote the museums of D C are in town.
Oh, all right. Thank you, sir. I'll get them up here. What's your favorite museum in D C?
Aaron's Bay.
Oh, you guys have their big renovation project now. Yeah. Hey, what do you have there?
Well, I got recreational facilities, which includes a park or etc. Aquatic.
All right.
Other places, cloud, I call them, Mexico.
Okay. Oh, here you go. You got an extra one there.
I'm done, huh?
Yeah, I'm going to do that over and over for you.
It's a big slicky.
Pull them apart. Now, you do an annual trip, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do. First down, nice. All right. What do you have?
In town, Depot Park.
Oh.
I like the water area.
Uh-huh.
And then, I like the close to home, but not at home, is the waterfall in Pembroke, and then the duck pond in Blackwater.
Well, these things really stick together. No, that's fine. Oh, yeah, the Cascade Waterfall there in Pembroke sure is special. Depot Park, all right. Man, what do you have here?
My train's my math.
That's fine.
Originally, I had my home, which is, but I think about, I'd like the trail, walking on the trail.
Do you have a favorite section of the Huckleberry Trail that you like?
I just travel around.
All right.
Yep. And out of town, Ohio, because that's where I have family.
Okay. What part of Ohio?
Columbus.
All right. There you go. I went to Cleveland, Ohio for the first time this past fall, and stuff, Great Lakes there. Looking by Great Lakes, it's really, it's big water.
I mean, probably in Palm Bay.
Yeah.
Huckleberry Park in Scotland.
Huckleberry Park. Scott, where is Scott?
The Highland is the favorite part, but Edinburgh, as far as big cities, is beautiful.
Yeah.
This is the area.
I have my home because I love the nature in my backyard. I like places that bring me comfort.
Uh-huh. All right. And then, you have beach.
Yes.
You have a favorite beach?
Well, I mean, in Virginia, I guess it would be Virginia Beach, but I'm from California, so I like the west coast beaches.
What part of California?
I'm from L.A., but, you know, I like La Jolla, that area. It's very, very beautiful.
So different from east coast. Rocky coast, beautiful. Excellent. Okay. Well, just similarities now already about Depot Park and the Parks and Rec assets here in town. Everybody's enjoying those, and the community, of course, as well. Very good. Well, our first activity is decision-making styles, and I'm going to introduce to you four different directions in the room. Anybody know what direction north is? That's where we are. Is it that way?
Somewhere.
Oh, Randy pointed this way.
Yeah, I did.
South.
That's east, that's west, that's north, that's south.
I'm left here. That's the thing back.
Okay, we'll use this wall.
No Franklin Street, no Franklin.
Would this wall be north? I'm going to stick these up on the wall. So, we'll go north with this wall, south, is that east?
That'd be west.
That's west, okay. East over here, and then west. Okay. And what I'll do is introduce each direction to you, and it's a way that people approach decision-making. And I'll read through each four, then I'll ask you to go to the direction that reflects how you approach making decisions. And then, once you get to your direction, I have a series of five questions that you'll answer, and within five minutes, so it's a pretty quick exercise. But I'll run through these four different directions for you. Some of y'all might remember doing this before. So, north, and we'll put it over here. People in this space, they're acting. They like, let's do this thing. Let's like, let's jump, plunge right in and try new things. Quick action, let's jump in and do it. And you're welcome.
Hey, I apologize.
All right. So, we were just talking about our second item on the agenda and decision-making styles, and I'm reading off the four directions, and you will move to the room where it aligns with your decision-making styles and working in groups, which are natural tendencies. So, north, that group is acting. They like to jump right in and do it. Big action happens real fast. These are speculators. They like to look at the big picture and possibilities before acting. So, east, it's over here, right?
Yep.
Okay. And underneath the picture. Okay. What do you have? West. These folks are attention to detail. They like to know the who, what, when, where, and why before making a decision. That will be over here. That way. Like a stretch, stretch.
Yeah.
And then, south. Caring folks, they like to know that everyone's feelings have been taken into account and voices have been heard before the decision. All right. South will be over this way. And before you move into your spaces, some reused land with your decision-making style, I'm going to review the five questions, but yes. So, you don't have to write these things down, but just for you to think about. What are the strengths that you bring to group decision-making based on your direction? What are the limitations that you present to a group based on your direction? Which direction do you find hardest to work with, among the other three that are there? And then, the fourth question is, what do others need to know about your direction and how you work in a group? And the fifth one is, what do you value about what the other groups bring to that decision-making process? So, I'll go and ask you to stand up and move to the area of the room that represents how you approach decision-making.
Randy and Andrew, you guys can hop into direction as well.
Feel free to join the council.
How does, how do you?
I tell you what. I know.
That shit's wrong. I'd have to be right.
Project is kind of going west, but we're not going out.
Yeah. And Sonia, you in east?
I'm northeast.
Well, which one do you out there?
If I gotta pick one.
You gotta pick one. Yep.
I'm in the middle of Salt Lake. I'm in Salt Lake.
Well, you have to pick an absolute direction on this one. There's no in-between cardinal.
There's no between.
Yeah.
I got activator in my clip and string, because I feel obligated to be in the north.
Well, look around real quick.
Nobody cares.
Does this surprise you with where you see each other landing? Based on how you all have made decisions and the content that comes before you?
Not at all.
Yeah. Okay, well, while you're in your groups, since you have a few people, you guys can talk about your five questions. You guys can talk about your five questions, and amongst, since you do have some people that are in your group, and come up with those, and I'll give you about five minutes to talk through what those five questions would be.
All right. So, I need to, things that you mean to, I'm going to miss things. I'm going to get there. All right. Yes, I mean, I'm innocent. I mean, I'm innocent. Especially on. That's the most important. I mean, I don't mean to get the least, but I need so much of my own, so I need to, if you try me into least, like, I'm going to freak out, but if I should be here, I'm going to give me the answer, like, I still live in your car, and I just, I mean, I also don't know where I am. I mean, I'm in kind of a big, 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 maybe this is a limitation, it would be for me, if you try me into the mid, the key, I'm trying to figure the big picture. I'm trying to figure this out. It's how to make this work. I think you work to fit. Otherwise, I'm kind of like, I feel like I'm in a, I feel like I'm in a, oh, I know. I understand. It should be surprising, you know? Whether I agree or not. Yeah. I understand they have, you don't play a role. I don't often think about, first of all, the, that one again, that one. What are the arguments? I think about the arguments. I think that maybe in that, I tend to try the argument, even if I don't know what you're going to prove against my definition. You know what I'm saying? Like, if, like, we're looking at this whole, the whole, the eight things that I need, so. I think it's, you can, I mean, you're usually, you're, you're, it's my, the question, you know what I'm saying? Like, if we're looking at this, the whole, the whole, the eight things that I need, so. I think it's, I think it's, you can make the, um, hard, the team argumentative, really just like, do something, then it can make, you know, cases from against the other ways. But, I mean, a lot of this comes to the, you know, it's, it's, I can make the value of it, I can make a mutation. I don't know.
So, who you work best with? Oh, Hardee, Hardee much later.
That's what we want. I'm very, very, I don't really like that. That's my decision. I think I need from them. I know the value of it.
Yeah, that's what they're for.
And then, you know, I have to pay with like.
A pizza?
I think making sure that you have the answers to those questions to make sure you know what you're asking.
Before we started working, we just said, my time you did a street, every one of the things you like, we did, we were in the gills. And we do an exercise.
So, we need to stop being surprised. We get too far down.
Right.
We get too far down, and we do something, and then we go back to the big picture. But you know that, that thing, you wouldn't know it till you kill them, but yeah, I know you. I don't like.
Okay, we got about 30 seconds left. If you guys have any other things to think about for your five questions.
And you don't like, like, I do.
You did bombs over here.
Just kind of structure. Okay, we want to talk about.
Yeah. So, that's the thing. Yes. Um, to me, why is, what's happening? What would be the effect?
Yes, we need to ask all the questions.
Yeah. And then, telling me about.
All right, well, let's come back to our seats here.
We're going to need about, we're going to need about five, 10 more minutes. We can get the big picture.
You do.
Yeah. My decision, where do I go?
Yeah. All right, buddy, buddy. So, before you deep breath on this one, Casey, that, our first exercise that we did that you've heard about, was your favorite place in town and your favorite place outside of town. What's your favorite place in town?
I'm going to go.
The museum.
It's a city, right?
Yeah.
Um, I'd probably say the Huckleberry Park.
Yeah. How about outside of town? So, we're outside of Christiansburg.
All right. I would say.
We're going to get a black friend by the side.
You know, I would be far off from the, from the museum and then get her a movie.
Very good. And then, Sonia. Erin Spade was her favorite museum. Who's your favorite museum in D.C.?
Um, I think I have to go with Mount Vernon, just outside of D.C.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, a little by, yeah.
Okay. So, was it surprising to you all to see who was in the west, in the east, in the north? That's surprising. You know, let's hear from north real quick. What are the strengths that you all bring to the decision-making process?
Well, so, you know, what I think about jumping right in, you know, like, plunge, it's, I think of open-mindedness to a large degree, and trying something, see how it works, you know, being able to change and criticism and all those kinds of things, and so I think him and I were a lot alike in terms of being able to adapt as we moved through something, but being, but being willing to just throw something against the wall and see what sticks first. So, that's, that's a, I think that was a big part of that strength, was to think you just got to have, especially if you're just going to work with anybody, right?
Sure. What about Les? What's the, or Samuel, anything to add to your strength?
No, he covered it good.
Okay. Les, what's the strength that you bring to that decision-making process?
Well, I guess one of the strengths we have, we work together as a group. Now, we may not agree, but we can work together as a group, put our thoughts together, and come out with a hopefully final decision. So, I think it's just, everybody's got their opinion, so let's work it out.
Sure.
I think one of the limitations, now that I'm thinking about it, is not just knowing the answers to those questions, because what comes out of those questions is what really makes us think different. I mean, we may all want the why and everything else, and when is this going to happen? How is it going to happen? But I do think that it can also limit you on how you want to do this, because that's what I was saying. I was kind of like, thinking about the south, but if you, like, Kim had said, if you're west, you really are getting the caring part too with that, because you really want to know exactly what you're doing, the things that you're doing, and how you're doing them, and how the staff will affect others in the community if you do them at this time being or later on, which I think that's one of the strengths that makes her a business owner myself.
I kind of agree. I think that if you're paying attention to the details, you're, that's going to take care of the caring part, it's going to take care of the speculating part, and give you permission to do the acting part, so.
Other strengths of the west?
If you've got more information, hopefully you make a better decision.
Uh-huh.
Well, I think one of the strengths that I noticed, just by the number of people, the people in the group, is experience, because, you know, I've got 25 years, Sam's got 10, 11, 12, Randy's got 100.
Yep.
And, you know, Kim's coming on, Joanna's got five years, so there's experience in, in with, in the attention to detail and looking at what's, the who, what, when, and what's, what we have to keep in mind, what's better, what's best for the entire town, not just different directions.
Right. What about east? What are you all, what are the strengths that you all bring?
Oh, yeah, look at this.
Was there anyone?
I got in at a conversation, and so I need to, I don't need to do a game. Anyway, so, for the strengths for the east, we find that, like, looking at the big picture tells us that we're going in the best direction. We think of all of the possible points of success and failure, so even though it's not to the, to like, to those tiny details, we pull up the information that we need, and we kind of look at it holistically, so that we can see all of the possibilities. We think about the arguments, we think about the failures, like, all the weaknesses, all the strengths, and see it comprehensively and holistically, and that gives us a lot of information about what's without choice or direction to go. That's.
Right, right. Trying to take everyone's point of view into context, right, so that no stones left unturned, but not necessarily having to get into the details until we decide, okay, from that larger picture, which direction do we want to go.
All right. And work backwards here, then, what are the east limitations there?
Um, so, there are limitations. I looked at a couple. I think it can make us.
Make it tougher.
Oh, the word that I used. It can make us impatient about the details, because sometimes we get, we start going so far down a road, and we're like, well, we may not even be, you know, we might not even need to head in that direction. And if we look at the bigger picture, and we realize it's a better direction, and we spend all this time in the wrong direction, it's just such a waste of time, and it, you know, we can't get that back. So, that's the limitation, and certainly something I feel is impatient about, like, getting too far into the weeds about things that we may not, may not even do.
Yeah. It can take longer for the east to operate a lot of them. Yeah. Les, what are your limitations?
Forward.
All right. Except that the east gets all the information. But north, what's your limitation?
So, first off, we said it was kind of wimpy that you didn't put weakness up there instead of limitations.
There are no weaknesses up there.
Because that's what you're asking for, but regardless, the, so, we're more of 60, 40 people. We need about 60% of the information before we can move forward, right?
I need to really just focus.
I think it can make the argument seem argumentative. Really just like do something. Then it can make you have a case that's only against you.
But, I mean, a lot of this comes to the...
You know, it's still, you know, it can be valuable. It can be kind of a situation. Uh, I don't know.
So, uh, who do you work with? Oh, oh, Hardee, Hardee McLeve?
That's what we work with.
Other than other than...
Well, I'm very, very, I don't really like that. That's my decision. I mean, yeah.
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 I'm not sure.
Yeah. The thing I need from them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I know the value of it.
Yeah, that's for therefore.
And then, you know, I have to pay with like...
A picture?
I think making sure that you have the answers to all those questions to make your decision.
Before we started working with you, we said, in my time you did research, every, every one of the... I think you liked what you did, we were, we were in the gills. And we do an exercise on this.
So, we need to stop being surprised.
Because we get too far down this...
Right.
We get too far down, like, we get too far down, and we do something, and then we go back to the big picture.
But, you know, that...
Yeah.
That thing's...
Oh, you would know it so you could say it was good. Yeah, I know you.
I keep them at a high level.
Good, now, yeah.
I don't like...
Okay, we got about thirty seconds left. If you guys have any other things to think about for your five questions.
I need small options. And you don't like what's always the usual, what's the most I keep up with, whatever. Like, I do them.
Yeah.
He's been fine over here.
Just kind of structure. Okay, we want to talk about...
Yeah.
So, does anything else matter?
Yes.
No, just a little play we put up on the question.
Uh, tell me why it's...
Play, 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 play.
Why, what would be the effect?
How to take that, but, how can you...
Yeah, so, maybe, we'd ask a lot of questions.
Yeah. And then telling me about...
All right, well, let's come back to our seats here.
We're gonna need, we're gonna need about, we're gonna need about five, ten more minutes. We get the big, we get the big picture.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You have harder ones.
Your picture can't.
Oh, yeah.
My decision, where do I go?
Yeah. All right, buddy, buddy. So, before you deep breath on this one, Katie, that, our first question I think we did that you've heard about, is your favorite place in town and your favorite place outside of town. What's your favorite place in town?
I would go...
The museum.
The city, right?
Yeah.
Um, I, I'd probably say the, the, uh, public church.
Yeah. How about, uh, outside of town? So, we're outside of Christiansburg.
Uh, I would say...
We're gonna be a black friend by the side.
Yeah. No, I would be far off from the, from the museum and then the, the, the...
Very good.
Yeah.
No, it's not, yeah. Aaron Spade was her favorite museum. Is there a favorite museum in DC?
Um, I didn't want to have to go with Mount Vernon, just outside of...
Oh, wow.
Yeah. It's a little by, yeah.
Cool. Hey. So, did, was it surprising to you all to see who was in the west, in the east, in the north? That's surprising. Uh, you know, let's hear from north real quick. What are the strengths that you all bring to the decision-making process?
Well, so, you know, what I think about jumping right in, you know, like, like plunge, it's, uh, I think of open-mindedness, uh, to a large degree, and trying something, see how it works. Uh, you know, being the change and criticism and all those kinds of things. And, and so, I think him and I were a lot alike in terms of being able to adapt as, as we move through something. Um, but being, but being willing to just thrust them against the wall and see what sticks first. Uh, so, that's, that's the, I think that was a big part of that strength, was to think you just gotta have, especially if you're just gonna work with anything, right? So...
What about west? What's the, or Samuel, anything to add to your strength?
No, he, he covered it good.
Okay. West, what's the strength that you bring to that decision-making process?
Well, I guess one of the strengths we have, we, we work together as a group. Now, we may not agree, but we can work together as a group, put our thoughts together, and come out with a, hopefully, final decision. So, I think it's just, everybody's got their opinion, so let's work it out.
Sure.
I think one of the limitations, now that I'm thinking about it, is not just knowing the answers to those questions, because what comes out of those questions is what really makes us think different. I mean, we may all want the why and everything else, and when is this gonna happen? How is it gonna happen? But I do think that it can also limit you on how you wanna do something. Because, that's what I was saying, I was kinda like, thinking about the south, but if you, like, um, Kim had said, if you're west, you really are getting the caring part too with that. Because you really want to know exactly what you're doing, the things that you're doing, and how you're doing them, and how the staff will affect others in the community if you do them at this time being or later on. I think that's one of the strengths too, that makes her a business owner myself.
I kinda agree. I think that if you're paying attention to the details, you're, that's going to take care of the caring part, it's going to take care of the speculating part, and give you permission to do the acting part, so...
Other strengths of the west?
If you've got more information, you hopefully make a better decision.
Well, I, I think one of the strengths that I noticed, just by the, the number of people, the people in the group, is experience. I mean, because, you know, I've got twenty-five years, Sam's got ten, eleven, twelve, Randy's got a hundred.
Yep.
And, you know, Kim's coming on, Joanna's got five years, so there's experience in, in with, in the attention to detail and, and looking at what's, the who, what, when, and, and what's, what we have to keep in mind, what's, what's better, what's best for the entire town, not just different directions.
Right. What about east? What are you all, what are the strengths that you all bring?
Oh, yeah, look at this.
Was there anyone?
I got in a conversation, and so I need to...
Those two.
Uh, anyway, so, for the strengths for the east, um, looks, we find that, like, looking at the big picture tells us that we're going in the best direction. We think of all of the possible points of success and failure. So, even though it's not to the, to like, to those tiny details, we pull up the information that we need, and we kind of look at it at holistically, so that we can see all of the possibilities. We think about the arguments, we think about the failures, like, all the weaknesses, all the strengths, and, and see it comprehensively and holistically, and that gives us a lot of information about what's without choice, or direction to go.
Yeah, right, right. Trying, trying to take everyone's point of view into, into context, right? So, that, you know, stones left unturned, but not necessarily having to get into the details until we decide, okay, from that larger picture, which direction do we wanna go.
Sure. And work backwards here, then, what are the east limitations, then?
Um, so, there are limitations. Um, I looked at a couple. I think it can make us, um...
Make them tough.
Oh, the word that I used. It can make us impatient about the details, because sometimes we get, we start going so far down a road, and we're like, well, we may not even be, you know, we might not even need to head in that direction. And if we look at the bigger picture, and we realize it's a better direction, and we spent all this time in the wrong direction, it's just such a waste of time, and it, you know, we can't get that back. So, that's the limitation. And certainly, something I feel is impatient about, like, getting too far into the weeds about things that we may not, may not even do.
Yeah. It can take longer for the east corporate spot, yeah. Uh, west, what are your limitations?
Lower.
Lower. Except that the, it's all information. But north, what's your limitation?
So, first off, we said it was kinda wimpy that you didn't put weakness up there instead of limitation.
There are no weaknesses of this.
'Cause that's what you're asking for, but regardless, the, uh, so, we're more of sixty, forty people. We need about sixty percent of the information before we can move forward, right? And then, we're gonna move forward, and, and it doesn't say that we can't shift in the flow once we get going, but, um, it, it goes into your number three, the hardest to work with are the eighty, twenty people, the Pareto Principle kind of folks, which is the west. They need too much detail before we can move forward. And, and so, uh, I, I think dealing with us, our limitations are that, that once we have sixty percent of information, we're ready, let's go, let's do this, stop playing around, and, uh, and if we get ten or twenty-four percent information as we go, um, you can easily shift our focus and convince us to go a different direction with, with logical discussion, but, you know, we wanna move.
That's interesting. I haven't heard of that observation of the north, that you're ready to move, but you're able to pivot as you go along. Is that okay to you?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that, that piece of adaptability, and, you know, I would add on the, on the limitations, is that occasionally, you might get caught somewhere where you'd have to discuss with the folks that are down in the weeds, that, uh, you know, you, you might, you might catch yourself with your pants down or something. You know, something you should've checked first, uh, that could get you in trouble. Um, so, you know, that's certainly something that can come back and bite you if you're not careful.
Yeah, I would say too, that in my personal life, I may be more north.
Yeah.
With other people's money, I'm more west.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that's right. I think we wear, have different ways we approach different roles in our lives. Absolutely.
Yeah, but I really see myself as kind of a combination. I mean, really, I think most people probably...
Well, yeah, we have different roles we play as a parent, as a, as a, in business or in life, and, and as we govern civic leaders.
So, this is always a fun point. Uh, we'll go backwards again. North, what, uh, what direction do you find hardest to work with?
Uh, west.
Absolutely.
Oh. Yeah, they take too damn long to make a decision.
Yeah.
They wanna know, I gotta know a little bit more, I gotta know a little bit more, I gotta know a little bit more, and we're like, let's, let's just, let's start building.
Yep. Start doing this thing. Gotcha. Yeah, what about west? What do you think is the hardest direction to work with?
Uh, it's kind of odd for me, because I'm a very caring person. I run a large nonprofit. I love people.
Uh-huh.
But I don't like dealing with people who make their decisions with their emotion instead of their brain.
Did you just storm out?
West feel that way too? That others agree on that hardest direction to work with sometimes, the east?
Well, I think, yes, it's hard, but, you know, once again, we deal with people's feelings. I think we are still looking to people's feelings, you know, like...
On the detail.
Yeah, I mean, we take them feelings in consideration.
Right.
Might be that much, but we... But, yeah, I, that's hard, yeah.
What about east? What do you find to be the worst direction to work with?
Uh, we think the west.
Gee, we do.
We just, we're big-picture people, and we wanna know the information that matters. Like, we wanna be able to go with the rest, the west is such an important resource. Like, we like going to the west folks to be like, okay, we need to know facts, we need detail, we need a thing, but we need what we need, and then we need to go and look at the big picture and put it all together in the big puzzle. And so, sometimes, uh, when we're working with west, the west folks, and they take a lot, like, where it's at, it's a slower decision-making process, or they want more information, and we're just like, we just need this up above here, we just need this information and nothing down here.
Right.
Yeah, but it sounds like you still look at some of those things that we do look at.
Yeah. We do, and, and as Kim talked about, you know, the south, that kind of resonated as well, like, getting caught with, you know, uh, up in emotions and not, you know, 'cause if you're getting caught up in emotions, you're not looking to get the big picture.
Yeah, yeah, I absolutely agree.
A lot of times, east folks will respond north, be challenged, because they're just so ready to go, and east, wait a second. What about this or that? Um, east, other, what others do you know about working with you in your direction?
Um, I think for us easters, we like, we like, um, facts, we like values, we like important details that aren't necessarily in the weeds. Um, we like information that's useful, and that's like bound to a value and a reason why, so we can fit it into the big picture. That's, that's like what we need.
Yeah. North, like, why does any of that matter?
I mean, once we've got the, once we've decided, then, yes, activate, let's go, but, you know, but like, big picture first, and then, then we go.
So, you're implying that we don't, we don't think that way?
Not at all.
The rocket's taking on him.
That's right.
Everybody's got elements of all of it in them, you know?
Yeah.
I figure I'm probably five percent north, five percent south, ten percent east, and eighty percent west.
Yeah, I was in, I was in the northeast, so like, that's a lot of it of like, I'm a big-picture person, but also, I don't wanna drag my feet. And so, that's why I, all I, I mean, that's why I know that the west is the hardest we to work with, because, um, it's, it's a lot of details and color piece. But I'm here in the northeast where I'm like, big picture, but this is good enough, like, let's go, let's give it a try.
So, I'm probably in the middle here too, because I like to move through this quickly to get to that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think everybody's calm, but really, so...
What about west? What others need to know about you working in your direction?
Well, I think being in the, in the west, we, known to act, we actually really need the input from the north and the east and the south. But we, we, I mean, that's kind of, you get into the who, what, when, where, and why, and, you know, before we really act, but, I think, to me, that's, it's, it's the attention to detail.
Involves everybody.
But it involves every, it involves all the other compass points, in order to sit down and be able to justify a, a, a sound decision based not on their hearts, or not on their feelings, or, you know, not the overall, but, but it's a combination of the others, that we have to, in, in our protection, particular direction, is what we need to be able to consider to, to come up with a reasonable, sound decision.
And I'm, I'm gonna say, me personally, I have, I came in, was gonna vote one way or whatever, had my mind made up, but after listening to other people's reasoning, or understanding of why it should be this way, it, I'm, it changed my mind a couple times. So, I, my mind might have been made up, but I'm open to listen, to learn. So, I have changed my mind a couple times. Not that I'm between two, I mean, do you? But, yeah, I mean, you gotta be open-minded, that's my, you gotta be open-minded. But you should be.
So, what about north? What others do you know about your direction?
Well, I mean, I, I think for me, it comes down to like, I'd always rather, I, I would, ninety-nine percent of the time, I'd rather do something rather than nothing. And sometimes, that may mean, you jump in right in, because if you're only allowed to turn and just sit there and do nothing, well, then, what are we doing? Right? So, I think that, that comes into play in terms of the psychology of, of being in the north in this category, is that something is better than nothing.
Yeah, I, I agree. We, we value the other three directions and what they're doing and what, what they're working on. Um, however, sometime you gotta put the shovel in and dig, and, uh, and we're gonna start digging until you come tell us to move the hole over six feet.
Yep.
But we're gonna start, we're gonna start digging, and that, you know, so, we, we are moving.
The, the north seems to have the George Steinbrenner theory of, of management, and it's, it's lead follow, or get the heck out of my way. So, that's kind of the direction that the north takes.
I do think, I agree with Kim, though. Obviously, that role can change from place to place. I do think that I'm very much north at home and at work, um, because I am right on business. There's no way to, you know, to wait. But then, like she's saying, when it's someone else's money, or there's decisions to make regarding the safety or, you know, financial investment, or the infrastructure, or things that are of the interest of not just me, but the rest of the community, and how, and that's what I go back to caring too, because I do care, and I wanna make sure that, because I have been in the, in so many of aspects in my life where I have had nothing, where I have had a lot, and, you know, and so financially, I have been in all the places that anybody can be, the place where you've got nothing, and so, I can really relate with a lot of people. I don't have money, and I can relate with a lot of people, I are millionaires, so, I think that makes it much difficult to be in politics, just because when you're doing something with someone else's money, and you try to look at the whole picture, it is very different.
Right.
I should say too, is, um, I've, I've been working with lots of people in management all my life, even before I was an adult, and I've watched different work habits and styles, and I like to work smart, not hard. I don't wanna dig a six-foot hole and then have to move over and dig it again.
Sure.
So, I like details.
Uh, north, what do you value about other directions to that?
I, I think you'll find that guys like Casey and I, um, care deeply about all, everybody, about everybody's opinion, everybody's decision. It, it doesn't, um, we're still gonna drive forward, we're still gonna, but, but, um, we value input, we value people, um, every aspect of all of that, um, as, you know, driven or heart-charging, or, you know, and we don't care if we have to dig two holes.
You can take my...
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna keep on, we're gonna dig, and, uh, and, and we're gonna give you a hug all sweaty and say, thanks for telling us to move the hole. But, 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 you know, we, we value, you know, we just, every aspect of human life, you'll, you'll find we're probably the most caring there are.
And west, what do you value about the other directions?
Well, I, I value, from the west, I value the, the direction from the north, because they, they're hard-charged, they at least put the ideas in front of us.
Yes.
And, you know, from the east, they, they, they will contribute the details that we're looking for, and, uh, so, that's kind of what those two directions are, are doing. It's, it's a, it's a mix of a lot of ideas, and that's probably, probably the best way to make a decision, when you have the best of, of the ideas coming from all directions.
East, what do you value about others?
Uh, all right, so, I value from the west, the details that I need, that I'm not, um, like, patient enough sometimes to go and sit with for a long time at times. The east, the west is such an incredible source of information, and they usually know a lot of the specimens and details and things that we can go grab, and it's just amazing. And then, in the north, um, I, I know, at least for me in the east, sometimes I can sit with an idea, I can feel really good about it, and I can get excited about it, but, uh, the north helps push us past sitting with a good idea to go, it is a good idea, let's do it. And like, let's just not be afraid of what happens, let's just jump right over the hurdle, and we're gonna change direction if, if we need to, and that's fine, 'cause, I mean, they're, they just have that extra thing of like, yeah, trust what you, trust what we know, like, let's just go for it.
Right. So, does it line pretty well with how you all operate on your council duties?
I think pretty much so, yeah. That's what I said, you know, like I said earlier, you know, my mind might have been made up on something, but listening to other people's reasonings, you know, yeah, it has, I've switched my mind a couple times, but I did, when I switched, it was, I still had to feel good about it. You know, I didn't go, I'm picking Tim, 'cause I can. You know, just 'cause Tim said it was okay, I still need to feel good about it.
Yep.
So, 'cause there was, sometimes I'm on that fence, so, you know, okay.
You're gonna have to make very hard decisions.
You know, yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
Another cool exercise, really about emotional intelligence, and, read a definition for you of emotional intelligence. Uh, it's the capacity of individuals to recognize their own and other people's emotions, to discriminate between different feelings, label them appropriately, use emotional information to guide decisions, or to guide thinking and behavior, and to manage and/or adjust emotions to adapt environments or achieve results. Um, there's the Harvard Business Review, has a really nice, brief, sixty-page book on emotional intelligence up in our management team, um, has used the book club item the past couple of years as a reference point. But that's, uh, emotional intelligence is so helpful, especially in the work that you're doing, when you're making a big decision, understanding where other people are gonna be making decisions in a different way, but everybody's contributing something to get there, it's helpful. But, hope this was a worthwhile exercise for you to see where each other land in that process of decision-making.
And I think it's a good idea, I mean, it, obviously, it's good that we all didn't go to one group.
Exactly.
I mean, that's, that's what make us work as a team, just different ideas, you know?
Exactly.
'Cause we all ended up in the north or the west, something's wrong, I mean, you know?
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Your personal life, you gotta have...
So, unless you have, unless you have to care a little bit.
Well, we all, we, where we do care, but we just don't work on a, put on a shoulder. Yeah.
That often, when I go over to this exercise, that's often the one that doesn't pass. Could just be the work that we're doing, I don't know. But, oh, good, I hope that was worthwhile for you. Um, so, the next items that we're gonna get into was the, the pre-retreat, uh, question I had for you, and we're gonna take several minutes for you, and we're gonna use the flickies again, and I'm gonna ask you to put one item on one, on each flicky.
I got one.
So, three to five items that you think the town needs to do in order to advance Christiansburg over the next five years. Um, and, just while you're doing that, um, there's snacks that are up here, there's cookies and some chips, and then there's drinks in the cooler, um, so feel free to get up, move around. Uh, I'll, we'll collect these, and you'll be able to share them individually here in just a little bit. Take a couple minutes writing one out.
Okay, you want to think that you have, that you break down the five things?
Yeah, three to five items for the town to work on over the next five years, so, I think, one idea, first flicky.
I turned my brain, I got three.
That's me, I just hurt.
I got three. My brain's hurting now. I shouldn't have called that man, but three, Frank. I'm calling his, uh, 'cause I'm, see, I'm talking to his partner.
They were his partner.
Good to see who the, I think it was too.
And the disease took over.
After some, okay. Same, I, I think, but, would you, would you want to come to Blacksburg as well? Would you have to, I have to, it's a different, it's a while now. Comes up, but, okay.
Sticky.
They earned their name, that's for sure.
Yeah.
They have a loose with time.
That's right.
Yeah. I guess something, but they can get something else. She sent a head-high blood pressure. Cause it's loaded, documented, but they didn't give me any. Well, it starts right here.
Yeah, of course, that's what you do.
And they go, oh, he touched me up.
Well, that's true.
But, but the reality is that it's all a fire. So they'll tell you all those things.
You leaving in, Casey?
Doing alright.
Hope no raisins are weakness tomorrow.
Oh, 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 now we know. That's what happened.
It's what? Raisins are what?
Yeah, made you think it was a chocolate chip cookie and.
Thanks, Mom.
I gotta look after these northers.
Yeah, she brought us napkins. We're too busy working for that.
Looking at the big picture of the cleanup afterwards.
Okay, so you wanna give us one to start off with here?
Yeah.
Well, it's alright, so the more I pull apart, the more I need to share later, yeah. So, you have revitalized downtown?
Yeah, I think we are over it.
Okay. Tanya, what, what point of yours?
Yeah, welcome.
Okay, let's, uh, scrub that just a little bit more.
Uh, we got, we would like to give a facility for emergency services in the Christiansburg cause it's growing so much quickly and I just want all of the development and the developers who live in that area emergency services will be there very quickly.
Very good, there.
Alright, well, I'll stay along that same line and my thoughts are to increase first responder staff in fire, rescue, police, cause the growth in the north sector of town, uh, going to encourage increased need for services. And I put to increase the police department authorized officers to seventy-five, I think we're what, sixty-five now, or sixty-two?
That's right.
But, you know, when you look down the road in the next three to five years, we've got ten or twelve retirements. So why not, well, we can get them on board and the marketing pool is good, and the application pool is good, get them now so that we don't have to wait till somebody retires, hire them, send them to school, train them, and you lose them for eleven months. So that's just, in a nutshell.
Okay.
Can you tell that was written by someone in the west?
In a nutshell. Yeah.
The detail. Hey.
Good, well thought out.
Yeah.
Details.
I sold this before we even started.
Okay. More housing, including some affordable housing. Wanna expand on that at all?
We have a housing shortage and a lot of homeless people.
Really starting to see more of that challenge than we ever did before.
Mine goes in line with, uh, with what Kim's saying, address the homeless population. Uh, we're starting to see, I feel like we're starting to see more, um, it becoming more prevalent. Uh, I don't know what that looks like, uh, obviously, obviously, yeah, I get, I get housing prices and stuff, but I, what I don't know is how we as a civic leaders can have an impact on that.
Yeah, that's a big problem.
And first, the looks of downtown.
Yeah, I think when most, well, one of, my first round, that's one of the goals was to improve the looks of downtown. You know, it's not as easy as we think it is, cause as I said before, you gotta wanna get the property owners on board.
Right.
You know, to improve their buildings and maybe we as a town could offer some type of incentive, you know, to encourage them to improve their buildings.
Right.
And to, uh, when they rent them out, not to be against anyone, rent them out, especially to, uh...
Forgot the word.
Not, not office spaces, but rea- uh, people to sell stuff.
Retail, retail services.
See, that's, see, we worked it out, see? Retail, yeah. Yeah.
So, yeah, you kinda hinted at something in there that's so important to downtown side, with the partnership. There's roles the government plays, there's roles that's private, it's gotta play, and it all works together.
And I think our town has some interesting, um, I guess, designs for the downtown. You have a lot of your downtown, pretty much owned by governmental offices.
Right, you have a county seat here, right?
And so, that makes a challenge because majority of the businesses that want to be rented out to those places are gonna be lawyers, officers and things like that.
Right.
And then you've got nonprofit downtown.
What's your first card here?
I think I like infrastructure, um...
Anything specific on infrastructure, cause that can be a pretty broad topic, is there?
I think sewer, water, um, roads, uh, soil and water.
Uh, we're gonna come back around to you, Casey.
I have, kinda being identity-driven and recreation has been a huge one for us, no doubt. And I want us to continue to do well in that, but I want us to look at other avenues outside of recreation that define what Christiansburg is.
You need a definition?
I'm kinda in line with that. I wrote "Made in Christiansburg" campaign promoting Christiansburg businesses and farmers markets. We saw a cool presentation at the M L, uh, about like a made-in kind of campaign or, um, do you remember that? A made-in Christiansburg, or a made-in like place. Uh, and it was just such a cool campaign and I just think that something like that really is a cool thing that we could champion with our local businesses and our farmers markets, which is in, people are making and growing cool stuff in Christiansburg and sharing it places, uh, breweries, I mean, all of these, like, things that are originating from Christiansburg and taking pride in the fact that that's been brought here. I think would be a good thing to kind of advance our small business.
Harvard Community Development, it gets that called, uh, resident attachment?
Yes.
And how people build attachments and certainly identify, we're gonna be proud of, yeah.
I'm telling that line, it's to move forward on the main street program and to expand to cover other areas near downtown.
Okay.
That's in the northwest portion.
What do you have? Improve aesthetics of town entrances, downtown business area.
Very boring and bland compared to the many places I've traveled.
Agreed.
Arrival.
Yeah, you know, somebody asked me a few weeks ago what stood out to me in Christiansburg. And, and just like when you asked that question earlier, I just, I've been here forty years and I had a hard time thinking of what, you know, what is it about Christiansburg that's special? I mean, there's lots of people, it's meant special, but, you know, but, um, we could really use some work in that area.
Um, and to echo the vibrant downtown.
Affordable housing, I mean, as we...
There you go.
Yeah, I mean, once again, you know, we use the term, what is affordable housing? I mean, what's affordable to me may not be to someone else. So, I think we need to not necessarily play on that word, use the word affordable and really get, I'm gonna say lower-income peo- persons, families.
Right.
So, you know, and it's, we as a town, I've learned that we can't do it by ourselves. Cause there is an organization, I've got, what it's called, I mean, they work out of Blacksburg and places like that. I've learned that it's a partnership, cause once again, you can have a, somebody coming to develop affordable housing, but then they have to get some type of agreements done and all this other stuff. So it's not just, we say, "Oh, we want them to build it," it's, it's a lot more to it. It is, it really is.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think a lot about what, um, my barber said regarding like the, um, farm men and police, um, that being a need for the future. And then not only the, how do we expand on the volunteer opportunities in the town to make, not just for the fire station, but for other departments? And how to grow on the, the, you know, with that base, trying to make sure that we encourage more of the high school students? And how do you build on that, to make sure that these young generations don't leave the town and go and get other jobs out of town, but that they stay in town, so.
Right.
I do see, um, the farm men right now, I always think of them being a big family. And, you know, you said the other day with, with the dead one of, um, the farm, well, actually, several people have passed away within the last year, but especially with Jeremy, the young guy that passed away recently. And it really kinda leaves you that sense of, wow, the farm men are special, you know? And Dabro, a different, I mean, I thought about it just from different perspectives when he passed away, you know? Of the future needs that we're gonna have and how connected they are in the group. But I also thinking about the generations, I want them to see that and I want them to have that. Cause it's not just volunteering, it's just a service to the community that is, is important.
Well, there's a challenge across the country of having people in the first responder roles. Which will curve, do you think a little differently?
Yeah, I, my third was also, um, affordable housing, which, you know, certainly, we talked a lot about it and I think, um, sorry. Um, when you think about, you know, this town growing as it is and, um, a lot of younger people living in the town, whether that's because of original spec or other, uh, industries, um, it's a part of higher ed, manufacturing and other, you know, other things that are bringing more folks into town. Um, uh, so it is much about affordable housing, has it also just is about, what is it, what is there to do here too? It was two different buckets really, but, you know, um, but I, you know, I have a lot of, you know, old college buddies and they, and they ask me, "What's going on in Christiansburg?" And there's, there's actually a lot, but they're, they're always surprised. You know, and they're, and they're, they're folks that are in New York City, Philadelphia, Richmond, wherever, right? You know, and, and so, they're surprised when there's a lot going on here. And I wanna, I want people to stop being surprised about what this town has to offer, you know, when they see it from afar or wherever they are. And if we're gonna get more of those folks here, you know, look at affordable housing and other pieces, so it all comes back together.
Um, alright, next on my list is a focus on strategic sports tourism, capitalizing on visitors, connecting them with services and amenities.
So, is this here on sports tourism? Give opportunity there?
Yeah, I think we can do a lot through sports tourism. I think we got it, got it wrong, and I think there's so many things to get it right and really put our, our, what Christiansburg offers in hands, people who are coming here for all of the sports operations in and around Christiansburg.
Mine's on the same way, it's to increase sports tourism and marketing, to take advantage of the outstanding facilities that we have. So increased events equal increased visitors, which equals increased revenue to our businesses in town. And it helps to keep taxes low.
Full circle there.
Economic development.
Okay. Anything specific, more high-paying jobs to the area, there industries or sectors or...
Preferably things not related to the university, you know, things that can stand alone. Um, you know, we're very, we're very dependent, yeah.
The, again echoing others, the fire, fire and safety, uh, the remote location.
That remote location align with what you've heard before?
Yeah, pretty much, I think we're, I think the majority of us are, uh, realize there's a necessity for, uh, you know, with the growth in the uptown area, that, that we have to do something, somewhere, somehow. It, it's just us coming together, um, and, and giving enough details for the west so that the north can start digging the hole.
Yeah, right.
You're gonna give me a hole on your stomach.
And that's, that would be called a groundbreaking, isn't it?
Oh, wow, there you go.
Alright, my, I put down safety, I'm referring to police, fire and rescue. Cause as we all know, uh, as Mike said, our police department, it's gonna be shrinking over the years. And people are not interested in law enforcement as they were many years back. And for ours, fire and rescue, it's hard to, volunteers are going almost to be at war. I had to use that, cause now like when I was running, people could get off from work and run cars. Now, they can't do that. But right now, we're going, as we can see, we're going more towards now pay-staff. You know, and I, and many years back, I fought that, cause I said, "Why should I run rescue squad?" And this guy next to me is getting paid to do the same thing. But you know, over years, things change, so, yeah, I mean, to keep people actually really safe. Sometimes it got close to the books somewhere.
Right.
You know?
I think our farmers market, what is the purpose, goal of events downtown, why not everywhere else? And what are the ones for the downtown area?
Okay, so downtown focus on this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. There are bits and bodes around here, for fours and fives, if you have four to five. You don't have to have four, uh, three to five.
About.
Yeah, as long as you use, uh, four, eight and five.
Alright, I got passenger rail service in Christiansburg. And then I've got build a vibrant downtown and I design vibrant on here, meaning open businesses, reasons to walk, shop, visit, and also stay in downtown.
Ah, stay in downtown.
Well, I've got, be mindful of the needs of our town. And if taxes and fees need to be increased, they need to do so in steps. People hate taxes, but they love services we provide. If we need to increase taxes, we must do so.
If you know, we provide the services.
At some point, you know, if it gets to that point, you know, that we have to.
Yeah, there you go.
I, I'm gonna go with keep taxes low and balancing them things to appropriately.
Sure, sure, lows as compared to what, lows compared to the county, well, we can go a hundred years and...
As compared to what the, the average person in the area makes and what they can afford, you know? If you go through and take out the housing and the taxes and the food, and, you know, unless you work for the county or the town or the, uh, hospital or one of the colleges, most people aren't faring too well right now, so.
I do think you can understand that, you know? Because of leaving, low taxes are higher than I want to feed them. Um, the meals are low, just to stay competitive, water and two-werries, um, coconut angles from going up any higher. Um, I know that they come with, obviously, a big price paid. And I understand what my barber is saying, you know, we build things that are very expensive too. and I understand what my barber is saying, you know, we build things that are very expensive, too, but then at the same time, um, one of the things that, uh, I was listening to the news this morning about, um, the big news was the, um, the more affordable places to live in the United States, and they were giving this big list, you know? And obviously, nowhere around here became one of the places even, still asking, wasn't even in the, uh, in there, but, you know, when you really think about, that's not just housing, that's everything that goes along with that, and, exactly, and so, if you spend most of your money, you know, working, I mean, you make money to work and everything, you make a okay living, be able to afford a house, I see affordable housing obviously being a problem, but you cannot create affordable housing with high expenses, you know? What, you cannot allow, you know, it's like you provide a rental to a place, we have a lot of very, very inexpensive rentals that we have for people in the community, and we feel really bad bracing their, their amounts every month. Why? Because we know they are in social security, and we know that they work at Kroger's, they work at different places where they don't make more than thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour, and so, how do you make sure that they have an okay living? But at the same time, they're not spending everything they make in water bills, electricity, and everything else, electricity's going up and everything, and so. We need those employees, you know, we need those people to not just, and we talk about having volunteers. That may be another issue, why we are not recruiting volunteers, because, because of living so high, now somebody has to make more than, than this amount, and a wife is not gonna allow their husband to just go and hang out with a whole bunch of guys, you know? To go and, and start fires, when you've got a fire at home trying to make a living, you know, and so, I, there, there's got to be a balance, too. And so, affordable housing is not just providing a housing, there's bills to go along with that, and, and meals went up, and everything is going up every day, so.
I do, I think it's been set already, but it's, um, the, the infrastructure things, indivisible infrastructure, you know, like the, the potholes. I'm so glad that Roanoke Street was finally picked, so.
Oh, yeah, it's been paving around town, that looks really nice.
One of the things that I had started to write down, that looks like we're winding down, is that I would like to see town implement a system, and, and they may have, of which, let's just say the dri- the, the potholes on the older streets and the unattended streets, we get lots of complaints about pothole here, pothole there, this time, if they had a system in public works or somewhere, that the garbage truck drivers, they see every street in town every week. If they could report the ones in need, you fix the ones in need before they become bigger potholes and bigger issues. And so, something along that line, I mean, to, to, and, and there are streets in town that haven't been paved in thirty years, I can guarantee you that. Others have been paved two or three times during that, I know it has to do with traffic, but they don't always know, I'll give you a pure example, Clearview Street. It's a narrow street, it's pretty rough, uh, but it's a major cut through from Rapid Road to Franklin Street there. So, it, it's, the things like-
We got Randy here taking some notes here, and that's a, a concept there.
Well, I mean, it's, it's a- I, I know that engineering, my guess, is part of your business, I guess.
You know, I mean, there's no need to make things beautiful, if your roads, you know, your roads are full of holes, I mean, it's kind of like, you paint the room, and, you know, then everything else stands out, so.
And I, and I know we get feedback in studies and, and interns during summer, but, I mean, you wanna, you wanna know where the problems are, ask the guys that sit over there, the ones that hit these potholes in the garbage truck, just my thoughts.
Well.
I have one more.
Oh, you have one more, great.
Transparency, communication.
Okay.
Sometimes it may not appear like there is enough communication, I want to see, like, tools, like Valerie had mentioned about, um, to be, to be, uh, able to notify more people in the community if they are being affected by a closing of the street, or by something happening in their area, um.
Good. Um, so, let's see, we had our priorities up here, helping to affect the community, we're curious about how these align with the existing goals that were identified within Destination Twenty Twelve here. Did you double print out of the goal, um?
That's this right hand.
Yeah, that's a list of accomplishments, and it has a list of the seven goals, basically, but, but the accomplishments are kind of grouped by, uh, the goal categories. Although, I'll point out, a lot of those may fit under more than one.
You gotta print one out, Andrew, okay, perfect, um, so, I'll, I'll roll through these headers, and we'll see if the things that you all identified fit within these headers.
Goal one was an act of destination for culture, recreation, and entertainment.
There you go. What do you have for goal two?
Goal two is the destination for retail commerce and service. Three is, uh, clean and green, healthy and safe. Uh, four is a town of well-informed and actively engaged citizens. Five's partnering with business and residents, a sound financial entity, everyone's hometown. And then, okay, infrastructure that makes the town move is eight.
You got the two, three, two, that infrastructure.
Infrastructure, yeah, that's what I was-
Does that mean, does that make the town move?
Infrastructure that makes the town move says goal eight.
Oh, seven on this.
Uh, did you miss that? No, that's, it's, it's, continue.
Uh, that's, that's nice, though, I like, that's, that's quite helpful, infrastructure.
Infrastructure that makes the town move.
That's, uh.
I know.
These, I need to do, detail.
He just called, he just asked you a question, didn't he?
Don't do that.
Just forgot one.
Alright, I'll put that one up there as well, I gotta move some of these around, see if they're fitting within these goal areas, um. So we got infrastructure here, passenger rail, and infrastructure improvement, road sidewalk, rezig.
Taxes low would be sound financial entity.
Taxes, hello? And, gosh, what, where do you want more high-paying jobs for the area? And we also have another category, we have to do a blank one up here, that if it doesn't fit an existing one, that we may have a new goal area, or?
I think everyone is hometown would be everyone for bringing more jobs to the area.
Yeah, I don't, I, I-
Better working businesses and other entities.
I think you want more people to come to the town.
Oh, that's, um, everyone town town, um. Partner specific organization to expand learning swim program for kids and adults, um, establish a specification entry-swing program of interchange at major entry points of town, um, so, tracking items, we're removing dark windows on, uh, police department patrol cars, more development of large-scale public spaces.
Which one are you reading, I'm sorry?
Uh, goal seven.
That's out of the, uh, yeah.
Oh, okay, no, what?
I'm looking in for content that you all have. Yeah, it could very well fit there, everyone's hometown, and of course, expanding the definition of the goal area. About, uh, the transparency and communication.
Everyone's hometown.
Every, uh, well-informed citizens.
Well-informed citizens, yeah.
What the housing, what you got a group there, somewhere, sure.
Well, I think that one, too, goes with everyone's hometown, because you want them to stay here and be able to afford it.
Which one are you, what were you looking at again, affordable housing?
Got a lot of housing up there.
I think everyone's hometown, because you want them to live here, too, and be able to afford it.
I, I'm not sure that it's not infrastructure that makes the town move.
But we have nothing to do with that, as far as, like, you, we're not building houses, we're building the infrastructure for it.
Yeah, it could be, we've got this other wild card area, it could be that we put it over there for right now, we come back, do, it might be a different, might be a different goal area.
Yeah.
Could fall under partnership with businesses and residents to some degree.
That was my next thought.
Because it's, well, I mean, commission is doing some work for our housing, and that's a partner opportunity for us, and so they're focusing on all-
But it's a partnership, it wouldn't be like you're building the, the, the whole-
No, it's a partnership, uh, we're partnering with businesses and residents, I would say, like.
I think, when I think about affordable housing for the town as a job in town council, it's what do we have control over? And I think the only thing that we really have control over is, like, zoning requests, planning requests, low taxes, um, low bills.
Yeah, the partnerships are what would bring that affordable housing, I think, yeah. We will not build a affordable housing, but we could partner with-
You know, the, the near rally housing cost for it, I guess, would kind of be an example of that.
Yeah, there's some housing elements within your current partnership with businesses and residents, um, encouraging residential living in downtown in Cambria.
Now, when you say you encourage it, but we don't change it, um, that's still, just because you want something, um, doesn't mean that. You'll have to make a change to really be able to change those items, you cannot just say, hey, we want housing, but, yeah.
Yeah, but that's aware of what they can have anything on it, and I think that we're having, we're having those discussions that, just because we haven't changed it doesn't mean we haven't been talking about it, we're talking about it, commission's talking about it, we had that presentation about affordable housing, like, in the works.
So we focus ener- you focus energy on something, it starts to affect change, and that's what we're talking about, is focusing energy, uh, towards that, and making it a priority in council that we're gonna focus, or as a town, not just council, but as a town, that we're gonna focus our energy on.
Yeah, this is all stuff that's on the to-do list, not the-
And I agree, it's not an easy task, it's gonna take a lot of collaboration, but I don't see that problem going away.
No, but we can take a, we can take a notch out every, you know, and it helps.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you don't do something about it, it's gonna get worse, not better.
Yeah.
We, we do have thousands, you know, over a thousand units coming on Pepper's Ferry brand, but, probably not gonna meet the demand, either, so.
So I've got one that's, it's kind of, kind of easy, I think, to peg, is focus on strategic and sports tourism, destination for culture recreation.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see, be mindful of the needs of our town, and, uh, taxes need to be, be increased, so.
Sound financial entity.
Okay. Increase sports tourism, marketing.
Yeah.
Um, we have a grouping of first responders here. Uh, clean and green, healthy and safe.
Yep.
So, it's, uh, let's see, identity in addition to recreation, made in Christiansburg.
Things for everyone's hometown, but, you know, the made in Christiansburg could also be a partner with the resident, I'd do it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Although it's, I like that everyone's hometown. Do you want to make people feel proud of where they live?
Residents there, perhaps, what was the identity one, everyone's hometown?
Yeah, I think so, I mean.
Okay.
You could fold everybody's, let's see, on the end of that.
Uh, revitalized downtown, we have several downtown.
Probably destination for retail.
Brutus, let's see, vibrant downtown, uh, in town, very clear, um, H U program, uh, town one? This one is, the aesthetic of town entrances downtown in business areas, uh, so perhaps a little more broad, but if it doesn't fit here, where is that?
I think it fits there, I think it, it, I, I, obviously, downtown's a part of it, and, and then the-
The header taken care of.
Yeah, I, I think so.
And the farmer's market, um, that's sitting here as a destination for retail commerce and services, yeah. It didn't end up necessarily with needing the use of another header. Are there meetings that we didn't talk about, if you're three to five? Has it been on your mind lately about how this is working out? Okay, well, let's take a break, I'll stand up, stretch your legs, restroom, grab a snack, uh, do what you like about, uh, be ten nuts, and come back at three forty, so, three thirty right now, and three forty, okay?
Finished now.
How you doing?
I don't have my, I don't have my cookie, I don't have my cookie.
Oh, you had your cookie.
My cookie.
It's been coming for a long time, it's on the show.
No, I was just, yeah, um, yeah, yeah, how's everything, Andrew? We've got things, everything, right?
Yeah, you're not using the phone.
I am, I'm not gonna use it, I have it. You can have it. They know, just wait.
Uh, it's all good. I'm, I'm okay, I'm, I said, I know where the, I know where everything is, I know where-
Yeah.
This is not my first rodeo, Andrew. Not my first rodeo, I don't care, I was like, ah, I got time, I'm busy, I'm busy, I know where things are going.
I didn't even, uh, I had some, some schedules, I could do that, uh.
I think you made, yeah, me, it's all right.
She, she's done all things, uh, the petri's, uh, so.
Yeah, 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 told you, yeah, it's, it's, I don't have a car, so he was saying, yeah, I'm struggling, like, yeah. Yeah, I don't know how, exactly. I mean, I'm, I'm struggling, like, yeah. I don't know, it's a hard one, I think, you know, I, you know, my husband's in elder care, I was involved in elder care base for seventeen years before I got out of it, and you have to do the wishes of the patient regardless of whether you agree. Understanding how you feel, but my lawyer, my daughter, my third mom did that for me. Things you have to grapple with, you know, some things you have to do, like, you know, if their wish is a certain way, and yours, you know, you have to honor it, that's, that's sketchy areas, like, where you have to sometimes go into your natural inclination or what you believe is right. I don't think I'd agree with assistance to a point, God's ever a way, but I, I think interfering with that is not a good, extreme comfort measures. I've seen this, oh, weeks ago, like, twenty-eight-year-old woman, and they were such a death, depression. Endured life, I mean, I don't suffer depression, so, I use essential oils, I've never. I don't know, I feel like that's a terrible.
In this small town, I went to the spirit of the speak, unfortunately, one of the things was housing, but so much support, what about allowing the community to pay, well, those things are built, but they put on the price of their motor, and you can't, I mean, anyway, everybody said that's not a good thing, but they're. Seven hundred, a thousand square feet, I don't know how affordable it is to tell me, the building cost is a million.
I don't know, but I do know that if you look long enough for a solution, you'll find one, you know, so, I don't think it's an easy thing, I think it would take collaboration of a lot of different organizations and governments, but I think it could be none if you want to do it. I mean, my concern is, like, that people who were born and raised here, and then they get to their retirement age, they can't, the, the, and it is happening, I'm also.
Yeah, well, I think it's, I was, and that, eh.
And all of it too, because of the tax, raising the tax rate, you know, um.
That's what we have to consider, even though, I mean, I understand, we all pay that county tax in this broad, but what we pay according to what you get for your fifteen cents or one dollar, so we can do it.
I agree with that, I don't, I don't.
But, you know, there's no way, there's no way you can reduce, I don't believe in water and sewer, I don't believe in losing money on the, to provide it, so, so if the rates go up, we have to.
I, um, I don't know, I think you have to do things so that you can have a work to do that, you know.
That'll put, that's great, you know, about the tax person, you go to work, it's on a lot of the.
And I would say it's kind of. You know, the total operating cost, you're gonna get, you're really need to.
You know, the town has to do this all, they're making a great income, you know, and you're able to have a good health, and you can enjoy all the amenities, it's wonderful, but, you know, if you're on the other end of the spectrum, and you're retired, and sick, and your, your money is going out, medical bills and taxes and all of that good stuff, and those amenities mean nothing to you, you know, so there has to be a balance.
I think the best way to, to manage is way before me. The manager I work for, the best way to control the budget is to control personnel and keep personnel, and I think that's pretty much true, because.
I don't believe in just growing government.
But if it's a here-to-hack of operations, salaries, you know, the both of our operations are salaries, you know, so.
And it was, it was, I wouldn't, I wouldn't call, like, you know, the bleeding, Joe Bonner, I went just beginning of the year with all of the.
Nearly, nearly like the business.
Well, I looked at the agenda, like, the, the mission was to grow government larger, that's not my mission, I'm sorry, I wouldn't have enough people to take care of everything, but just to be growing government.
Or, but that's part of my thought on increasing, you gotta have something to do, because then you have to hire, you know, excess, and you have to stand around cleaning against sharks, but.
Pretty soon, everything is important to the government, it won't be anything.
I don't think anybody argues that, which, uh, rescue water, sewer, streets, you know, government has to do these things, uh, you know, I guess you can have a debate about how much we do in regards to recreation, you know, it, it's kind of more of an option, uh, you know, something like the Focal River Trail isn't gonna happen by itself either, the private sector's not gonna be like a threat.
And I love the trails, I mean, if I had to say something, it wouldn't be the trail. You know, they're like, oh, you're saying that's not, you say you.
When I started here, I was saying, we were probably waiting for recreational schools, uh, in nineteen, we opened a rec center in nineteen seventy, then maybe six years later, we started, bought you an aquatic center, and now one of the parks, that's pretty big investments, obviously, and I'd say we kind of, you know, I'd say we probably underserved for recreation, and we probably have more for recreation than just about anybody outside, so, and we have to maintain it, but, and I'm not proposing to throw recreation in there more, but maintain it, all right, there it is, there has been, obviously, a little focus on getting people here with our recreation, or like, sports complex, or baseball tournament, tournaments at the rec center, musicals, and physical field, and, or.
And even in that, you know, you end up in a balance, getting enough income to where you're not taxing people to death, but at the same time, having enough availability to keep the taxpayer who is paying for it, you know, I'm afraid with it, one, or another, one day.
Some lodging tax, both are a little outside, property tax is probably a little on the low side, but, um, kind of that way on purpose to help town residents to make people who are coming here for things, to play their fair share, if they use the land, if they use, it's all.
And our places, with bright shining faces. Yeah, well, you know.
We're not the, we're not the highest tax rate, we're the town, we're still paying, their, their town's new tax is eight percent.
There's a few.
In South Dakota, Virginia, who are they?
You have, uh, you have Big Stone, you have Hillstone, but.
A lot of places have a roof, they have a top.
Get everybody back.
Alignment check exercise.
So I'm ready to get started.
Alignment check exercise. Oh, no.
Just want to get it, find out in the second one.
So, um, looking at item six on here, that whole area relevancy, um, I'm impressed that things wind up, I think the goals we created several years ago have stood the test of time for relevancy, are there, do you think that any of those areas need to be tweaked, based on what you identified for priorities? And ask you again, is there anything that you didn't identify in your three to five priorities that you feel like needs to be up there, that's not up there down?
I was actually quite impressed with how closely this group aligned with even the twenty twenty-two, because I think the majority of us weren't a part of the.
Yeah, that was the first one we had, the Goyaw took off.
Yeah.
But, uh, him is, is the.
Yeah, I'm just saying that I, it may have been my first year taking office, but I don't remember these that well, right, we were, we were like, three months in office, maybe, when we had that retreat or something, and it wasn't much, and.
Well, that's what I thought, it was before us, right? It was.
Yeah, so I.
Well, it was originally Vision twenty twenty, and we updated it to Destination twenty twenty.
Okay, so the fact that we're still, that even this group who weren't, the majority of us weren't a part of the government, the civic leaders at that time.
Right.
Still have these as, seeing them as priorities for our town, I, I was quite.
So what underneath may be changing, but the direction that we're headed, I think, is very, um, set that.
Yeah, as I mentioned earlier, at the very beginning, this document is very robust, strategic plan, I don't know anyone else in the region that has a document like this, because the story of it is, is obviously a really good roadmap, and Randy and the team have done a ton of, you know, checkmarks on some of the stuff that's in here.
Yeah.
Randy, do you want to, um, well, hold on a little bit, I guess, I just make sure, I would encourage you all to review this on your website, or download, print this off, make sure you go look at it some more, but coming out of the retreat, these things, it would be an opportunity for the staff to update this document with these things in here, and also the second part of our agenda, we're about to start now, is the capital initiative, capital project.
Yeah, and I can, can I just, one more thing, I, every time I see this, you know, the, the stuff that, that our people accomplish.
Yes.
It just, it wipes me out, because, you know, we, I can speak for myself, I see little things here or there, and, and the committees that we happen to be personally associated with, we hear of things that, that are, that our staff of the town are doing, but there's so many, literally millions of things, that, that the great people that work for the town of Christiansburg that do, that, that most people have no clue, and so I just can't, can't say enough about, every time I see this list of things that our town has done and accomplished, it blows me away, and I'm very appreciative, so.
You heard that, Randy? Did you share that message with Beth?
Please, yeah.
Talking about Randy, I really wanted, it may not be the place, but, Randy, thank you for being here today, I do not know that you just loved your sister this morning, and that really breaks my heart, that, just to know that you're here right now, and just know that, um, that you will be in my thoughts, my prayers, and thank you for being here with us today.
Share that. Um, so, Miss, in these items, about these, these items are gonna get worked in here with staff, and, um, then, our next piece is the capital project discussion, and Randy, I think you guys, to pass around that accomplishment, let's not let you speak to that before you dive into your capital projects, but the, the concept that we have here for you is that Randy and Andrew will walk through a slide, try to get condensed information for each of these, because, you know, they're, they're a while long, so there's gonna be condensed information they're gonna share, it's thanks for you all to ask questions a little bit more, and I'll be taking some notes on the side here, if there's things that you all need more information from them on, but we're just introducing it, letting you all get more information, and then we'll do some, we'll do some discussion about what is priority, what projects may be a priority for you all in council, yeah, frame it up. Okay, well, I'll turn it over to Randy and Andrew then, for the next section.
We'll get to use Mike a lot, right?
Of course, we, we provided you the list of accomplishments, so we had staff to try to come up with those, they taught me a few things that we took off of there, because I think we actually maybe have too much of information for some departments, we didn't necessarily want to give you every class, and, and new class or anything, but we still wanted to give you a pretty good idea of some of the things we've been working on, so, and we've done that, and I think we've got at least two or three of those from prior retreats, I'll sit and tour those two, if you'd like to see them, but anyhow, that's just kind of, for your information as much as anything, and kind of give you an idea of some of the things we've worked on over the past couple of years. Um, we have a presentation for you, and there are a lot of cost estimates, and kind of a little waiver, I guess, to that, that the cost estimates are intended to help facilitate the, the council discussion and prioritization, but please note that many of these are provided cost estimates have not had detailed study or formal design done, uh, which would really be needed for a hundred percent accurate budgeting, so, you know, these are, at least some of these, I simply pulled numbers out of my head, I didn't, I didn't do a design and, and try to put it out to bed, uh, you know, but I, I try to be reasonable with what, what I thought things would cost. Uh, enterprise fund projects include water, sewer, stormwater, regulatory compliance, flood mitigation, replacing aging infrastructure, and installing new infrastructure, and we'll seek out discounted funding sources and grants for, for any of these. Some water, sewer, and stormwater capital projects, there's several factors that necessitate the need for capital projects related to those, regulatory compliance, renewal and replacement, existing infrastructure, system redundancy, maintaining and updating system capacity, and flood mitigation. And water projects, I guess I maybe might speak to these, but these are basically a list of water projects that we have, and one thing I kind of want you to keep in mind is with the enterprise fund, these are within the enterprise fund, we can't spend money from the enterprise fund on other things, so these are dedicated to these, so they aren't in the general fund, so water, sewer, and stormwater are kind of enclosed conversations for you to some degree.
So in the project description, I kind of gave you just a ninety thousand foot, as it relates to the previous slide, uh, some of the, what's necessitating the project, like the buffalo tank rehab and replacement, is renewal and replacement and compliance, uh, the water loss study is system capacity, and, do you want me to go through, just read through a brief description of them?
Sure.
The water loss study is a project to determine the amount of water loss that occurs within the town's water distribution system, every water system in this country has a level of water loss, we're trying to ascertain what that is for the town. Engineering studies and inspections, this falls into the renewal, replacement, and capacity, project will identify the areas of the town's distribution system that have the highest water loss, and the plan is to develop a plan, capital improvements, that will help reduce that water loss, going on down.
The water loss study, we're already, we've started that.
The water loss study has been, has been started, and it should be finished this summer.
Right.
So, and we budgeted into next FY twenty-five for the engineering study, so we can go, okay, where's the hot items where this is happening, and what can we do to, to reduce that? The East End Waterline Project, that's a, that's strictly a redundancy project, and what that project would do, there is no second water line feed that feeds the town to the east of the bypass, so what that project would do, would extend a water line in the following branch area, out past Reagan's Point and make that connection, so if something happened to the one feed on Bronoak Street, then there's a second feed to supply water to our constituents to the east.
So Mike, it's, it's, redundancy really helps with continuity of service.
Absolutely.
Plus, plus potentially water pressure.
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes, and fire flow, and fire service flow and everything. Uh, for pump station upgrades, the Edwood Pump Station, and that's one of those areas where we, we'd like to increase the amount of fire flow, it's a renewal and replacement and a compliance, uh, driven project, basically that's for the design and replacement of the, of the new water pump station, increase capacity and fire flow in that area, South Franklin, South Franklin Street and Edwood, Edwood Drive, and the total, uh, in FY twenty-five budget that was just approved is the number right there, the two point three eight million, and there were a few. And there were future allocations uh for the East End Waterline and the pump station uh at end time for another 1.9.
Yep.
Do you want to play a little water?
How do you get back?
Got any questions on that? Um says it's not the first time you've seen it.
No, I think most of this stuff we've we've talked about.
And like I say, this is kind of a little bit of an enclosed because it is the Enterprise Fund, so not really discretionary spending.
We'll make sure. So for the sewer capital project, and again, all these have the same uh drivers that are necessitating the the project. Uh we have a water's list station, renewal and replacement and compliance. Uh that project is ready to go. We just need to get it bid and get it out of the street. Uh Tower Road Lift Station, uh as you know, the town is under the consent order and this is an area where we see sanitary sewer overflows. So we're going to do a a uh a study and a upgrade to that lift station. So and that's to be developed in the future. We put $190,000 in the budget for this year so we can start the design of of that of that lift station uh upgrade. Silver Lake Interceptor is actually going right now. It's under construction and we anticipate that being finished uh this August. And that's a renewal and replacement capacity and compliance. What this project will do is a 15 inch diameter interceptor, sanitary sewer interceptor. It will allow us to take the Silver Lake Pump Station offline, which is an aged, very aged system and is in need of replacement. So instead of replacing the lift station, came up with this project to design a gravity sewer. They don't have to worry about ponds, don't have to worry about electricity. So that will take care of that part. And like I said, that should be done in August. Area sanitary sewer rehabilitation, that is our consent order project. And that was grant funded through MOPA to the tune of a little over $3 million. And that one definitely falls in the compliance bucket for the need for the project.
I'm glad to see that project moving forward. I live on that creek there and my neighbors often have sewage coming up that way.
Yes, ma'am. Uh we have bid that project. We've received favorable favorable bids. And we will be bringing that forward very soon for to council for approval for the construction. How long is the project? Is that for construction? That's about probably 12 to 15 months.
Yeah.
So and I think everybody's familiar with the plant upgrades and that is being funded through the, if I can say this, the Virginia Clean Water. Revolving Loan Fund. Thank you. Engineers acronym it. Uh so I I think every I I'm not going to go into that one. I think everybody in the room is familiar with that one. So uh and again, to the tune of what's in this year's budget for these projects is is a little over 19 and a half million. Uh as you can see, we're either loan or grant funded for the absolute majority of that. And there the additional future budget allocations would be for the the Tower Road Lift Station in the future.
I I see under the sewer capital projects and I guess that would be considered something else. Public Works Facility. I know that you were talking about some um additional things that we may want to talk about it. And right, me just when I was thinking about all this capital projects, I thought that's another one of those needs for me that it would be kind of like in the bucket list. Um I'm sorry.
Yeah, you can put a clicky on that and we'll get it on the board here and then it looks like we're going to talk about it for you, right?
Yes.
Anything else for sewer?
More? No.
Okay, uh stormwater. We have some ongoing items and these fall in compliance and capacity. Uh we do have to monitor the the in the infrastructure that we have and we maintain. So from time to time, we do stormwater evaluations and analysis. I know this sounds silly, but groundhogs like to dig into the ground. And when you have pond burns, you need to be looking at these things and making sure that everything is is good to go.
There must be northern groundhogs, is that correct?
Just using that as an example, you don't want excessive trees or anything growing on your pond burns or in your pond. So.
Calm, Casey.
From time to time, we we analyze these and take a look at it and make sure everything is good to go. Uh Blue Ridge Channel stabilization has a compliance capacity necessity. And there's some erosion in the channel downstream of the town's food line pond. And that is to address that scenario, that that erosion going forward.
I think that's the food line on.
On North Franklin Street. Yes, thank you. It's the food line on North Franklin Street. Um College Street Drainage Phase One. Uh we are in the process of signing construction contracts right now. The construction is going to start this summer and it should be the phase one of the project should be finished in November, December, should be finished by the end of this calendar year. Um so here's an announcement for you folks. I don't think you've seen this yet. But the town has been granted a little over $4 million in a 9010 grant to match. Phase Two College Street from the Community Flood Prevention Fund.
Really?
Got $4 million.
Wow, congratulations. Good job.
So about 3.6 that is granted and our match is 400,000. I'm rounding it.
Yes, yes.
You know, so but what we're going to do.
Yes.
We are, uh I got an email from the community, the grant manager this week and we are, he said the agreement is coming soon. So you will see that on a very uh in the near future on a council agenda uh for your approval. And this is to finish the piping work.
Yeah.
College Street. Uh and what we're contemplating with this also is to, there's a vacant part of land on Depot Street. Uh that is not utilized by the town. We own it already. And what we're contemplating is designing another stormwater retention pond there to help mitigate the flows coming into downtown.
That phase two grant is powerful.
So as you can see, 3.5, well, the grant is, you've got different match amounts for in different fiscal years. But all told is approximately 3.6 million grant to 400,000 match. So moving on down, culvert replacement. This is a project that has been out there. We need to do it. It's renewal and replacement. And it will help with flood mitigation. Uh and this is primarily some culverts on Slater Street. Um Industrial Park, uh stormwater and stream restoration. That project is ongoing right now. The contractor is really going to begin in earnest starting July 1 on that project. We did get a slap grant for about, I was told it was about 280 some thousand. What I'm showing there is only what's in this fiscal year's budget. But it's a little over a million dollars for the stream restoration. And the necessity, what's the the need for that is there's some significant stream erosion. You don't see it because it's outside out of mind over there, but there's some significant erosion in that area and we need to fix it. Um Hickoff Street Drainage Improvement, uh been in contact with the contractor on this one. We've signed contracts. You folks have approved it for construction already. There's a multi-month lead time on concrete structures. And as as you guys know, that is some pretty significant box structures that are going to be installed. So the contractor is going to start in the first week of September after Labor Day. And the reason for that delay is they've been ordering the structures. There's a month of lead time on the on the actual material. And uh summarizing the the amount in the budget this year is two, 8.2 million. Grant loans is just under 5 million and future allocations and the lion's share of that is the phase two grant for just under 5 million. Questions for Stormwater? We did this. Congratulations.
Yeah.
Well, it all started with the with what we call the Resiliency Plan. We got a flood grant. We got a grant from them for $45,000. And we created a plan which council approved 18 months ago or so.
Yeah.
And we we picked projects out of that and we're going to throw them in the bucket and and keep applying.
Up next, we've got transportation park projects that could include sidewalks, trails and road improvements. Uh we do try to, whatever we don't federal funding for projects and reinvest in existing infrastructure. And part of the reason we kept transportation projects, even though they are general fund funded. Um we typically get grants for those and yes, we get varying percentages depending on the type of grant. If it's a smart scale, it's typically 100% VDOT outside of a 3% of right away in these my acquisition, which is next to nothing usually. Um if it is a smart scale application or if it's a uh uh transportation enhancements project, it's 80% VDOT, 20% local. If it's revenue sharing, it's 50% VDOT, 50% local.
So the first project is the East Main Street Sidewalk Project just up the hill here. And this one is actually funded 100% through the CDP G grant. And this is a sidewalk project uh from approximately School Lane to Harl Street. And Cambria Trail, this is a revenue sharing project. And what you're seeing in the in the FY25, you'll see some of these have the future allocation. And I'm going to just remind council, some of these projects take, it takes years to do these these VDOT projects. From the time you make application, it can be five and six years until you're complete with them. So you'll see dollar amounts in certain fiscal years in the budget for these. It may be for design and right of way. And then there may be other monies in the next subsequent, you know, two or three fiscal years that are actually the construction of the project. So you don't really see all the money at any one time, but it's out there and it's, you know, we're we're planning for it. And the resolutions that we bring forward to council, you know, in council, like we did at the last meeting, there's a resolution for the 4.2 million for the the bridge grant. Um you know, council is committing to those funds and and appropriating any matching grants that are that are part of that. And granting Randy the authority to execute any of the contracts and the documents associated with the project. So Cambria Trail is one and as you all know, that's from Mill Lane down uh where the land is that we own. Uh for the perspective, uh rail station is going to be. And then it wraps around and comes down down to the uh down to into Cambria itself off of the off the depot down there. Um and that's a revenue sharing project and we're just really getting into the starting the design of that project. Uh Stafford Drive Signal is another revenue sharing project and we're in the initial stages of design for that one. And uh engineering right away is really scheduled for this year. And then we anticipate the construction really being in the FY26, FY27 timeframe. So that's why you're seeing those future allocations in those. Uh you'll see that we have a lot of pedestrian improvement projects. So that's something that we've been focusing on is trying to connect the dots and make the town safer for people to get around to them. Um so you've got the Roanoke Depot pet improvement. And that project is a transportation alternative and that's one of those 80% grant, 20% match projects. Uh the project will construct new sidewalks along the north side of Roanoke Street. And uh connect sidewalks east and west of the intersection. And it will also include pedestrian signalization. Uh Roanoke Street and First Street Improvement, basically same type of project, but it's to uh install pedestrian accommodations at that intersection.
Can I have two more seconds? I'm sorry. The Roanoke uh 3 Depot pedestrian improvement, is that the one that goes by the um? Um by the, what's the name of the company that does the cleaning supply?
Sunkenka.
What?
Sunkenka.
Yeah, that one. Is that the one? Is that what you're talking about here?
It it is right right in that area. It's more on Roanoke Street.
What?
It doesn't carry the park street there.
Correct. Right. So it's more on the Roanoke Street side in front of the the gym there that they have.
Okay, the pink thing?
Yeah, yeah, the Southern States. Right, right in that area.
I'm sorry.
There's two, there are two projects in the immediate vicinity. Uh one of them is the Roanoke Depot. And then we have on the next slide, you'll see it is a Roanoke Street Crossing, which is building a sidewalk from Depot Street down to Barkwood on that side. Um but uh North Franklin Infill Sidewalk Project, again, another transportation alternative project. And that's to construct a new sidewalk on the east side of North Franklin between Mill Lane and Water Street. Um we've got our primary extension paving. You mentioned paving amendment ago. Uh the next section that's to be paved in the town is from is on Pepper's Ferry Road from the Town Limit to Arbor Drive. So we're we're doing a long stretch of pavement uh on that eastbound leg of Pepper's Ferry, hopefully in the next fiscal year. Questions about transportation projects?
Yeah, do you have anything in the idea here, anything about connector?
The Connector Road?
That is, these are all these funded projects that we have. Uh that's the Connector Road is a smart scale application.
Now, do you have any in the small project for like the sidewalks between Depot Street and Cambria? Yeah, like the backside where it's tiny and it's on that side all the way to.
Right, yeah, along North Franklin. Yeah.
No, Depot to Cambria, like.
We've got a trail going from the Aquatic Center to Cambria.
That's the, that was the Cambria Trail that's on the on the previous slide. It goes from the Aquatic Center at Mill Lane right there and wraps around and gets to Cambria.
Does that go and where does the exit out of? Just right there by the CHP location?
Down there near the depot. Down down at the.
Yeah, it comes out on on Depot near Community Housing Partners and then it'll be sidewalks along Depot down to the Cambria Depot Station, is what it would be. So it'd be a trail. Yeah, it'd be a trail through our property until you get out to Depot Street.
Right.
Is that going to have any ability to have any connection to like the Heritage Trail thing and everything or not at all?
Long term, there's, I guess, talks of uh east-west trail, uh valley-to-valley trail system.
Right.
It's still in discussion at this point. Um it's going to be a huge lift to.
Yeah, that Valley Valley Trail, it was a consultant that VDOT had hired to look at corridors and they got mapping from our office. And they didn't quite finish the study and pick a a corridor. So we're waiting for VDOT to release the study to the MPO. And once they get, the MPO can ask our office to do public engagement and work with uh special propagators to figure out a corridor for that. That's Valley Valley. Really, how do you connect Christiansburg to western part of Roanoke County?
They had a preliminary map, but it had several alternative routes. So they and they hadn't determined the final route yet.
Hopefully going to be able to do the next stage. Yeah, how you tie into Christiansburg is going to be important for that.
Yeah.
So the first project on this slide is the one I just mentioned uh about the Roanoke Street Crossing from the Depot to Barkwood, sidewalk project. Uh next project after that is the North Franklin Depot Intersection Improvement. And this is a 100% smart scale funded $5 million project. And uh project is to improve state on Depot, North Franklin and College Street intersection. Uh adding pedestrian facilities and reconfiguring uh the turn lanes at both intersections. Uh there's a small section Pepper Street that's to be disconnected and a short section will be closed going up the hill right there. Uh North Franklin will be reconfigured from two through lanes in both directions to one through lane. Uh in both directions will be center turn lane and College Street will can beverted to a right-in, right-out only configuration.
Uh what? College Street where is that one?
At College Street at Depot Street.
So the intersection of College and Depot, you will not be able to turn left out of there. Uh it will be a right-in, right-out only. And that is an area that has significant accidents. Um North Franklin Wade Pattern Improvement, that's going to go to, we're going to bid that this summer for construction. And it is, as I mentioned, is a pedestrian improvement with pedestrian signals at the intersection. North Franklin Sidewalk Improvement, that project is revenue sharing and so is the Wade Lane Pet Improvement, revenue sharing and TA funding on that one. And the North Franklin Sidewalk Improvement will construct sidewalk in Curbin Gutter from Elm Street to Mill Lane. And North Franklin Lighting Elm to Depot, what we're basically doing, we've got a smart scale project for a little over $2 million. To do lighting improvements on North Frank. scale project for a little over $2 million to do lighting improvements on North Franklin Street to match the lights that are between Independent and Cambria. So, that's 100% funded.
This one, right there is a perfect example, North Franklin Depot Intersection. And that was pretty much what my husband was coming down to town consult to speak about too, regarding not enough communication with business owners or property owners. And obviously I have an interest because I have ownership to property on North Franklin Street and Depot Street. I'm sorry, it could be open right there, but no communication from town council, I mean from town without them.
Continuing on with transportation projects, we have a $150,000 grant from the Federal Highways Administration. And it's an 80-20 grant for us. And the purpose, and this is called the Safe Streets For All Study. And the purpose for this is to improve roadway safety by significantly reducing and eliminating roadway fatalities, serious injuries through safety action, safety action plan development and refinement implementation focused on all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, public transportation users, motorists, personal companions and micro mobility users, and commercial vehicle operators. Project will create an action plan for improvements. And that plan can be used to apply for additional federal highway associate funding for a construction project, very similar to the resiliency plan that we did for the flooding. We're developing, got a grant, we're going to develop this plan. And then we're going to try to go back to the well to build more of these projects.
So, this '24, '25, or '25 to '26?
The 150 is in FY25. So, that is July 25 through the end of June of, or 24 through the end of June of '25.
So, you hope that most of this project should be finished by next year, right?
Yes.
Probably will have to roll a few of them over. But that's, I think there's 18 of them total?
There's 18 or, I've got 18 on here. There's a few others that I didn't put on here, but I thought they were just really small. But we've got approximately, I think, 24 months to complete this study. But we don't want to wait 24 months. As soon as the, you know, as July 1 comes, we want to, we want to go ahead and put this out. We have to solicit this professional service and get it out there and get this thing started, get this plan finished as soon as possible. South Franklin Pet Improvement, this one is going to bid for construction this summer also. And we have TA funding and revenue sharing. And it's exactly that, it's pet improvements and pet signalization at South Franklin and Earth Street. So, the next two projects are about the only projects that we do not have funding for. One of them is the North Franklin Bridge Deck Project. And just a reminder on what that one is, a couple of years ago, we did a study. And that bridge was built in the mid-'70s. So, there's been decades of salt intrusion from snow removal into the concrete of the deck. And this project is designed, it's called hydro excavation. They will go in with high-pressure water, they'll blast out the concrete, and then they'll rebuild the deck from the rebar up. It's much more cost-effective than going and building a complete redecking of the bridge. But we're still working with Norfolk Southern to get a permit to work across the railroad. That's been the hangout point moving this project forward.
We allocated funding for that already.
This is a project that's role.
It's general fund. Yeah, but you mentioned that we don't have outside dollars.
Yeah, but we approved this.
Just clarity, he said it wasn't funded, he means it's not grant funded.
It's not grant funded, I'm sorry.
It's in next year's budget.
Yeah, in next year's budget is not grant funding with the VDOT.
I thought we, we paid for it though, the council did.
Yes, yes, sorry, sorry about that.
Good, I'm good.
Trail lighting, the trail lighting project, this is to provide some lighting in the downtown Park Trail and on Depot Park Trail. And we just need to get that thing out the door and bid and get it built. Roanoke Street Sidewalk Infill, this is a future project. And basically, that's what it is. We're, we're doing sidewalk on Roanoke Street and connecting the last of the dots from Hung Gate, basically down to Falling Branch intersection. So, we're, we're trying to connect these pedestrian, these pedestrian dots. And that one is a transportation alternative grant funding, it's 80-20. And the last project I have on the list is the one that you guys approved the resolution on Tuesday for. This is the State of Good Repair Bridge Grant. It's 100% grant funding to replace the small bridge on, on Walnut Branch, just north of, of Roanoke Street on, on Depot, right there. And it's a, oh, I'm sorry, right, right near Park, right, yeah, right near the Sanico. And that's 4.2 million dollars in, in funding for that one.
Well, you see a lot of, yeah, I mean, a lot of these projects are focused on North Franklin and Roanoke Street, which are, are busiest, you know, two of our busiest streets in town. And where we have the greatest gap, you know, for sidewalks.
So, you can see the amount in the FY25 budget, it's 15.6 million. And the grant amounts that we have, 10.8 million. And the future allocation budget is 14 and a half million. But keep in mind, almost every one of those has some level of grant funding. That's not the amount the town is going to have to come up with to pay for these projects. It's either an 80-20 or a 50-50. So, that's, that's all I really had about those projects today.
So, we were, we were recently ranked number three again on, right? And is this?
We, we were. The, the town in, VDOT has what they call the, if, if you have five or more projects that you're managing as a locality, you're eligible for what's called the Locality of the Year Program. And it has been given out for six years. The town has won it three times. We came in second place once, and we came in third place this year. So, we've done very well. And we play the grant game very well at the town of Christiansburg. And we leverage a lot of money and we get a lot of projects done.
18 projects next year. I don't think anybody else probably has nine in the district.
Blackspur came in first place, I think they have five projects. We've got 18.
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's, that was my point, is to make sure that, that your staff and everybody knows that it doesn't go unappreciated. And I think a lot of folks in our town don't realize how many, how many projects we really have going on and how much of it is funded out of grant money and not tax dollars.
I think how, so we are, so we got so many roads that our main roads are owned by the state already. It's not helping to a lot of it. For us to be able to get as many grants, it has to do a lot too with us having a lot of the main roads being owned by VDOT.
We own our own roads with the exception of the interstate and the 460 bypass, which VDOT will never give us because they're limited access. The only road that, that VDOT maintains, owns and maintains in town that we could take over is North Franklin Street from Cambria Street to the Corporate Limits. They maintain it, we've told them previously that we would consider taking that over, but that we wanted the drainage problems fixed in the area of the old Chick-fil-A.
Yes.
You have stark standing water when there's a big rain. We've told them we wanted that, we told them we wanted that fixed. And we've told them we wanted it repaved. And if they did that, that we would be willing to take it over. But they haven't really been willing to do the stormwater.
What are the benefits of having them give it to us?
We get maintenance money, and then it is ours to maintain. So, we can, we actually do a better job of maintenance than VDOT does. We, we move more often than VDOT. We probably pave a little more often than VDOT. You look at the VDOT streets out in the county, you've got a lot of gravel roads, things like that. We subsidize our paving program here. We get, we get maintenance money based on lane miles from VDOT. But we subsidize that with our own, own general fund. And that's part of the reason our, our roads look better than county roads.
But there's two feet of standing water in that, in that one section at times.
And there is, like, always over there by, well, now it's a motor mile, by Duncan, like, right there where the country cooking, what was the name of it? There's always, like, so much water over there. Yeah, that one. Thank you, guys, impressively.
Anything else with transportation? I think, I think engineering is probably in the band, but with transportation, I think.
We're absolutely at the limit of what we can do. Yes.
I will note that most likely see in, in the next, probably in the next year, VDOT's going to be moving to do a pedestrian crossing where Walmart is. Since that is in the VDOT maintained area, that would be, that would be their project that they're going to be managing that.
That'd be really cool.
And they also have some plans, have awarded, been awarded funding for improvements at North Franklin and Pepper's Ferry.
Will that be a bridge, you think?
No, there'll, there'll be pedestrian crossings, but it will not, it will not be a bridge. They are going to be changing some of the, the traffic patterns aiming around that intersection.
Oh, that's going to be great.
It is, it is.
You should love the bridge.
Forecast it out for 2028 and 29.
I love the bridge over there by, by the, by Pepper's Ferry Road. Maybe there is some option, Andrew.
Facility projects, this is probably where we need more input from you than, than anywhere. Some of the things that have been discussed are fire rescue station, Public Works Complex, recreational services. We try to provide facilities that meet council's goals and community growth expectations and still ensure that we are fiscally sound in maintaining of what we have. And we have, I guess, kind of several items that have been talked about. I think you're probably aware of all of these, but we'll just kind of run through them. Fire rescue station, there's a need for high-growth areas, particularly Pepper's Ferry Road Corridor for additional response, as well as a desire to lower insurance rates in the area at the top of Christiansburg Mountain, which is out Roanoke Street and into the county. That would probably affect about, about a third of the people that would be affected that by that would be in town, probably two-thirds of the ones would be in the county, as far as decreasing their rate. Get what would go for them. Ten to a four, to a 10. It, it would seriously reduce their, their fire insurance rates.
Right.
And I put approximate cost, approximate cost on this, 10 to 15 million or potentially more, depends on, you know, land purchases needed and exactly what you put into it. Do you know, do you want block space included? You know, is it going to be a two-story building versus a one? I think, you know, let's talk the things we need to decide. But obviously, it's, it's a big need. Another item of need, Public Works Complex, the current Public Works Complex got growth limitations. It's partially in the 100-year flood plain and does flood occasionally. And it's difficult to exit out onto 114, oh, I'm sorry, to North Franklin Street with equipment. They desire approximately 15 to 20 acres. And the cost, I would estimate, three to four million or more. And that is kind of really dependent on, obviously, how much land, if you buy land, and what type of building construction would be needed. You know, if you were to buy an existing building, that, that might maybe keep your cost down if you aren't doing construction. So, it kind of depends a little bit on where you're looking for property and what exactly you're building.
We do the video.
Yes.
Can we talk about these as you, as we go?
Yes, you can. Let me, how do I get out of this?
They can do right-click.
Right-click.
In show.
In show. I'll show you just really quick a video of Public Works.
Council retreat 2024.
This is our Public Works Complex during a really big rain. That's basically Crab Creek getting up. And so, you know, there is no stormwater project that's going to fix this.
If we purchase the land or Public Works, would we, would we sell this land?
I would think that would be, you know, a possibility unless you wanted to keep it, keep people out of the flood plain and they want to keep a portion of it. There is an upper portion of land. And I've actually been asked whether we would consider selling that to the industrial built, uh, property beside of us. I said for now, we want to keep it, but until we know what we want to do with Public Works. But yes, yes, we could sell the complex if we do that.
Do you know the value is of what we might sell? I know that's the.
I wouldn't say much because you got, the majority of the buildings are older than stuff.
I, I really don't think it is worth a lot, even though it is a fair amount of land. Buildings aren't the best, and they are definitely industrial, older, older industrial buildings. And it does, well.
And then you have probably a big issue with not just, but also the, the buildings where the salt keepers, what, what are they called, the?
Salt Dome, Salt Dome.
Yeah, so.
Higher up on.
Yes, that, that is out of the flood plain, the Salt Dome is.
So, you can still keep, possibility of keeping that because that's, I mean, that sounds.
Yeah, the Salt Dome doesn't flood. All honesty, we would probably, if we bought a new piece of property, we would probably relocate that, is what we would probably do.
Oh, really?
I think we, I think that would be easy enough to move. Although Jim had the possibility of maybe wanting two locations of salt, salt throughout town just for ease of access to Public Works.
So, that's very accurate.
Has Jim, have they scouted out any prospect at this point of location?
We've looked at a few properties. Everything's expensive. And, you know, councils had discussions of this previously. I don't know if current council has, but prior council has. I don't, I don't really want to talk about any particular properties right now in prices because, but, but we have looked at a few properties in town. I think, to be honest, I think anything in town we've looked at has probably almost been cost prohibitive. We've looked at a little bit of property near town too, that I think is possible, but still land is not cheap.
Because, I don't even remember.
I'd say, I think a good chunk of that would probably be land purchase of the three to four million, probably, probably half of it.
There was some land over there by, I guess, the.
The, yeah, so, I, I think you go back, I, in my mind, I'm thinking, so we've, we've got two topics here. We got the fire and safety, fire rescue station, and then you got Public Works thing. And I, I'm not sure that we're in a financial position to do both at the same time. And it boils down to, we as a group, trying to figure out which one is, is one more of a priority than the other. And, and then kind of focus and go from there because they're both pricey. One obviously is like four times more than the other one, but I, I just, again, and when you look up here on the wall, one of the two got more hits than, than the other one. And so.
That's because you don't see them.
Yeah, no, I.
I mean, Public Works is always there, but it's kind of like.
Yeah, they're out of sight. And they, they're always behind the scenes doing stuff. They're not as splashy as the.
I do think they get taken for granted a little bit.
Oh, they do.
I agree.
People don't see, you know, people don't see water lines and sewer lines, you know, and they, they do take their water and sewer kind of for granted to some degree, I think.
I just, so I, personally, I just think that fire and safety is a, is a 12 to 24 month decision by us. And the Public Works Complex is a 24 to 48 month decision to, to figure out what we're going to do.
The land that we already own, that we used to call it Randy's Mountain, where they had all this turf stored?
Brick dust.
Huh?
Brick dust.
The brick dust, yeah. I mean, is there, I know that we just recently, in the last couple of years, bought a couple of the old mobile classrooms and renovated them. Are they, are they such that they could be moved to that upper ground?
That is something we could move.
You move that to the upper ground, you can move.
We could move the Salt Dome too.
Well, no, but I mean, even, even the, the shop where Jim's, where the, right up against the back of the property, there's a couple of, there's a couple of offices down there.
I don't think, those, those are under block buildings.
Understand it, but they could be a similar, if we found a similar item to that, it could be, that, that particular works. Understand it, but they could be a similar, if we found a similar item to that, it could be, that, that particular work zone could be moved up to the top. And possibly the shop. You got everything out, almost everything out of the flood zone, keeping it on land we already own.
And so our landfill, how long before we can use the landfill for anything?
It has to close, completely close.
Oh.
And that's.
Years, yeah.
It's probably still years.
Okay.
It is years.
Yeah, okay, alright.
That would be the ideal spot.
No, actually, that was my thought, but I just didn't know how many more hundreds of years we've got on before, before it, the gas is all out of it.
You still are limited to what you can put on it. You could probably use it for sports fields or something like that maybe. I don't think you'd want to build under it. You can't build a structure.
Good to know.
It'll be more like a storage facility kind of type.
And public works uses it to some degree for that now. They have like gravel storage and pipe storage and things like that there.
So are you implying that you have potentially a couple of locations for this that you may want to, to let us do our most favorite thing in the council meeting, go into the closed session to talk about?
We can, and I do have a couple of locations to talk about. It's probably been a while since I've talked to the property owners about their prices, but I could go back.
Because I don't think we've had one of those in two meetings, so we're about new.
Question for you guys.
Hunting and everything to read, so.
I have a question for you guys regarding this. So if the store is, we were just talking about fire station and stuff. We, we were just talking recently when we were talking about that budget. How do we make it, where we pay more for more of those positions? And it's gonna happen and it's gonna take place. How is the money gonna get here? Obviously that's, we probably have to swing Michael Barber's way, you know, where we have to increase taxes to make that happen. But then at the same time, I just think, I know that there is any Pepper's Ferry Road, um, that side of town for a fire, you know, for some kind of, when I talk about years ago about having a fire truck over there, you know, I was just talking about fire truck. Now we're talking about a fire station, you know? And so I just kind of think that whatever we try to figure out how to make more money to, or come up with the money and cut somewhere in the budget where we have more of those firemen pay, we have a lot more. But then figure out later on, once we have the firemen, how we can be able to acquire a facility without demand, there is no building, you know? And I just, I know you want to plan ahead and that's great, but if you got the county getting another three million dollars to invest into the safety and department, now we're going to be competing with our own county for those resources. How can we compete the town of Christiansburg, like I was talking to Tanya the other day, additional three million dollars that got in their budget? We don't have that amount of money to compete with.
Do we approach the county for funding for?
I think it would be really good. I think it would be really good and even asking them to build a fire station, what is, I am all up to, even if they came to town council and that's obviously my vote. And my vote would be, we will donate if, if we cool, and my vote would be, you know, donate the land, part of the land over there. If they were willing to build a fire station at the Huckleberry Park, I'm all willing to do that.
I think last time we talked to them, they were willing to participate to some level of, of helping us or fund, giving some level of funding towards the fire station. Is that correct, Mayor? To some degree.
I did approach them about it and they're, they said that they would consider it in the future, but because there, there's something about they were concerned about the name of the building and they wouldn't consider it anymore.
Yeah.
I understand it, but the name was never, I asked them for X dollars to, you know, for combined fire rescue on Run-up Street near Dunes, which was the ideal location at that point. And they came back and said, well, you know, you don't know, we don't know what you want to name it, so we're not going to talk about it right now. It's as stupid as shit.
The Christiansburg Montgomery County Remote Fire Station, I mean, who cares?
Call it Montgomery County Fire Station, as long as we got the.
I, I will try to get them back to the table in, in letter form, I'll get with Ray over the next, with the two and then, because there's some other things that, you know, they're, they're talking about wanting to spend one point two million dollars for twelve full-time firefighters in Elliston for three shifts. And I, I think that, you know, there's some movement that, you know, possibly some, some funding could come to increase our state.
I mean, we pay as much money as they pay in real estate.
Our fire department runs more calls in the county than any other, other fire department.
Oh, I, I see them all the time going out of town.
Our rescue runs half the calls in the county, the total.
On this topic for the facility project, we do the recreation. Do you need some direction from council on preference of prioritization of fire rescue and public works?
I, I think so.
Yeah, I do think when I bring out the public works item, if, there isn't a, like the way the public works got it on, some of the seminars are where that structure was built, you know, wasn't horribly costly, but if we can do what Michael Barber suggested, move some of the structures off of the flood zone, I'd be, I mean, that's obviously just an immediate fix, that wouldn't be a long-term fix. Because I do believe in the long-term fix will be, they are going to require more equipment as the town grows and they are going to require more resources. And maybe by then, St. Wilson's option of using all our landfills would be great, but in the meantime, we.
Our grandchildren won't be allowed, it's time to use that landfill, I would say that right now.
So I, so I, I, I think that, see personally, I, I'd like to hear some of your options. Like I said, I, I, you know, last thing I want is another closed session, but I do think we need to hear what you think you have as an option personally, so that we can make an informed decision, because right now what you have to talk about is not something open for public discussion yet. So, me personally, I'd like to hear what your options are for public works and then we can.
And I, you know, you, you talk about a couple of options, I, I don't want to hear about them if you haven't found out that they're for sale or not. If there's a possibility, if they might sell, I don't want to hear about it. I want definite properties that we can consider, not just, oh, well, what if maybe we can?
Right.
Just narrow it down. They're not making any more land, that's for sure. We may even have to go out of town to buy.
Maybe I'm out of topic right here, but what are the chances for the town to grow inside? Is, is that a possibility or is that really almost impossible to do on the corner? And how does that take place?
There's two ways, you mean as far as growing our corporate units? Two ways that can happen. One is by a friendly boundary adjustment with the county, which does both the town council and the board supervisors agree that it happens. And both of you take action and, and then it happens. The other way is by annexation, which will likely result in court. And probably go into the commission or local government, go into court and a few other things.
When you get into those.
Well, we have, we have over the last, since I've been manager, we've probably done six friendly boundary adjustments with the county.
We've done one since I've been all council, so.
And those have really been at the request of the property owners, wanting to bring their land into town.
So what we get, what you get into is you continue to grow, then you're growing in the areas of the non-income producing. In other words, you got real estate tax, that's it. But we're still maintaining, but if you're going to have to grow, then you need to grow into the.
Industrial.
The industrial and the retail, I mean, going out to the Dunk, to Duncan Honda, I mean, this is an example, I'm not saying that's where we're going to go to. But in order to make it worthwhile, we've got to, just, just for the sake of taking in a housing development of twenty-five houses that don't like the public service authority because they can't get water and the roads aren't, just to take them in for that and incur that expense, it's not worth it. It is not worth it to do.
And when it comes to fire station, for me personally, I, I, you know, we have the land, we have several pieces of land we could potentially build the structure on. It's just quite pricey and, and I, I like the idea of you guys talking to the board of supervisors one more time and asking them if they're willing to come to the table before we have a, before we go any further with it, that's me personally.
Maybe just take a preliminary, not follow it up with a, with a, with a formal letter to them in the.
Because when I look at the fire station need over there by Run-up Road, I see a mostly Ford eighty-one and shows the whole area. And right now that way in Walnut Creek subdivision, which they are not really owned by the town.
But originally they could get on, on four sixty and not have to drive up North Franklin.
They could go down, they could go down four sixty bypass and I think be from there to the, to the one fourteen exit or to the exit at Pepper's Ferry in about three minutes.
So if we were going to go into pros and cons, when you look at, at putting it out there to park, you get that expansion of the, for insurance purposes and granted, two thirds of the county will benefit, but, you know, they, we're all one community. And, and you would have a more quicker response time if you sit in the fire. When, when we get briefed in our committee meeting, they show us the, the call volume. And the larger percentage of call volume happens to be in that corridor in the last, at least the last couple of years, Tanya and I have been doing this.
The one fourteen corridor or the Elliston?
One fourteen. Yeah, it has a larger percentage of call volume for fire and sa, well, it's more safety than fire, but, but the safety calls, the, the rescue calls are, are a larger call volume in the one fourteen corridor than.
So we're talking about our rescue building not a fire department.
It'd be, but it makes sense to not build a joint facility and, and so you can, it's a remote location. It's not going to be the same size as what we have down here. And, and they have the ability, and, and reality is what we, we've kind of thrown around was having a, a more multipurpose where there'll be one little wing for a remote police station to, to have one little room on the end. And then there's a requirement for a specific wall because of fumes for, for the fire and then the rescue vehicles.
Separate HVAC too.
Separate HVAC and then because we're talking about potentially having full-time firefighters, it makes sense when we build this initially to have bunk houses in it, because you've got to have a place for them to sleep. So if not, we're going to, we'll have to come back and do a modification, so just build it right to begin with. That's why the cost is so much, sorry.
Once again, I, I think I will agree with, you know, donating even the land to the county if they wanted to put county police, county firemen and county rescue squad. I mean, at the same time, they're still protecting us, so, um.
Well, reality is we have to manage, we'll have to manage with, with Christiansburg Fire.
They still work together with all.
No, we all, it's all one, in the end, in the end, they all work together, but.
I, I don't, I'm not so concerned about the name.
They, they don't have a fire chief, the county doesn't, right? We have the fire chief, we have the rescue.
Yeah, they have the emergency services coordinator, I think.
It's a coordinator who works.
Coordinator.
But they're not a chief.
Well, the county has so much more money, they can pay for a fire chief. Yeah, so.
I find it interesting, Tim, I like, I like the concept, I think it's money saving idea, you know, of bringing things together under one roof. But when I talked to, when I went on the tour, Randy so graciously took me on, if I recall, he wasn't really into the idea of combining things into one building, because I asked that question.
Chief Hank?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that's why we make the decisions.
Yeah, but I mean, I wonder, I would like to hear, I can't remember if we went into much detail on why, but I personally think it's safe. Yeah.
I think, I think it probably makes a difference what location you're looking at.
Is it wood that has?
Because if you're looking at the out parcel of the park, I think he thinks it might be too tight for.
That was out here, okay.
Um, you know, there are some other properties that he's looked at where we've kind of talked about combined building that.
So in terms of you all being established priority between those two, it sounds like there's a little more information that needs to be gathered and that's kind of in the works right now. So I was like for the fire rescue conversation with county, check in on there, and then for the public works, if there's been a couple of properties called together.
The west wind's out.
Go over your point, get your details.
Name it, new fire station, the west wind.
Yeah, the west wind's out.
But you guys will be able to prioritize that sound, uh, soon, it sounds like, so.
Yeah.
For recreation?
Should I move to next item or?
I, I'm fine if everybody else is. Yeah, I know.
Uh, overflow parking in middle lane needs paving, lighting, landscaping and stormwater treatment. And a rough guess, a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. Not, not a huge project, but still one that needs to be done.
Well, I think the, the current lot, the overflow lot we have is proving very serviceable. And I think if, if we can upgrade it and pave it and, and market, you know, the parking lots, I think we can get more parking down there than what we're currently getting. But I think that, that would be one that I would like to see us pursue.
I'm not an objection, but.
Let me maybe move to the next one, because these are similar. Huckleberry Park overflow parking, uh, needs graveling, paving, lighting and landscaping. Uh, we've got, actually, it's. It shouldn't be an X there, I think we got seventy thousand in there for the temporary gravel. The final location of overflow needs termination and extension of the drive is needed if we're going to use the rear lot that was planned for the, the parking. A major consideration of rear park, uh, planned parking location usage is the cost extension of the Booker Key Washington Boulevard and stormwater management that goes along with it. So the cost on that, if you use that front out parcel, I think you could probably do it for roughly a half a million. The bad thing is it eats up that front parcel and I think that was the most desirable parcel if you want to market it. Plus, I think we wanted to save it for potential emergency services or some other use down the road. And also I think it was more desirable to have the parking closer to the field where it was planned. So I guess those were kind of some considerations. But the bad news is if you do go to the, the, what was planned as the parking, I think it's closer to five and a half million. And that's because you've got to build at least a portion of Booker Key, uh, Washington Boulevard. You don't have to build it as a public street, so you don't have to build it to the same standards. But you still have to build it. There is a dip in it that you may want to take out, uh, before the road gets built, it's going to have to be taken out. But you, you don't have to take it out just to get the, if it's a private drive. If it's a public street, it's got to be taken out. That, that's kind of the situation with it is what, what is best? Is it better to try to use the, the, the front parcel, although that's the bad thing about it, is be itself a prime lot that I think is worth millions of dollars.
The same token, the interim, I mean, this, this would, would be an interim fix. So to spend the money to get that lower parking lot, gravelled and whatever we need to do to it, in the event that we open the back one, then, you know, that's just that much further along that particular lot is that somebody wants to buy.
Talk about the fact that we wanted to gravel that, I thought that was.
We do, we do have the money in there for temporary, that's the, with seventy thousand in there. That's, that's really temporary graveling, that's not, you know, it's not paving, it's not lighting, it's not landscaping.
So you're saying the five hundred thousand dollars, we saved that front lot?
Yes, and that's assuming we've, you know, we've gravelled it.
I personally think that the right location for permanent parking is that back lot. Close to where everybody wants to be, it will improve our chances of getting the front sales project for the semester really, because we're going to be doing a portion of that. And the other lot is a prime lot, whether we use it for emergency services or not, what a great opportunity it is to like put a, a great strong business there versus parking that's really far away from what everyone's trying to get to.
I agree.
And if we sell the lot, it pays for this.
I, I do think the lot's worth at least two to three million, so.
Oh, yeah.
So in the interim, as we've already seen, we don't have enough parking.
Yeah, well, yeah, no.
So in the interim, we need to go ahead and pursue this front lot.
We are, we are, this is budgeted and we are doing that.
First thing we want.
So the more gravel you put on it.
It's a lot, it's a lot, we've got the budget to do that.
The more, the more gravel you put on it, the more people that drive across the board, you compact that lot so it can. you can pack that lot so it can easily be more built already. But I mean, for now, I think we have to take that step.
Yeah.
That means that we also need to instruct, and I think we have, we need on, on the own, like uses of overflow parking, we need to make sure that the rec partner is, is able to shuttle people from that parking lot to the upper floors.
Well, he said he, they're already working on, they've got that already under control.
They've got some of it.
Yeah.
They've got golf carts, but I mean, I, I don't know whether they have had that bus repaired yet. They were, we had a bus that we got from Blacksmith Transit or that, you know, they, we, I think instructed them to get it road ready so that you can take more than two or three people at a time.
Can I ask you something? When there is this big, um, group of people coming to rent the space, isn't there something where they can also purchase for their own private transportation? I mean, there has been many events where I've gone in the past and, you know, if there is a golf tournament, the golf tournament people are required to get their own transportation means.
I think the rec center, or Parks and Rec is prepared to work with large, if it's a lacrosse tournament or soccer tournament.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
They rent, they actually pay a rental fee if they want us to, to provide golf carts, or golf carts, shuttle service.
They pay for that and everything.
They pay an additional fee for that.
This is just during the times like, I understand during, during the Santa Lotta football season, there were lots and lots that the overflow parking was almost to the point of overflowing also. So it's, that's, that's something that when it's our events and, and it's a recreational event, then we need to be responsible for the shuttling. And yes, whoever we rent to, if they won't.
Right.
They, they have that option to pay for, or they will pay for transportation from the shuttle service.
We do have another golf cart budget at the lot also.
Right.
Next.
But I think I'm hearing do plan on the rear lot.
At some point.
Well, what you're hearing at this point is.
Well, the front, front lot for now, but at some point.
Yes.
Don't, don't focus on building the, the front as permanent.
Right.
Okay.
Recreation center, uh, facility and parking. And this kind of is, I guess, fairly recent discussion. The center opened in ninety-seven and has a tremendous amount of use. It's free to town residents. There's a need for additional parking at events and some desire for additional indoor uses such as meeting space, pickleball, family restrooms, et cetera. A desire to improve safety at Cambria Street entrance closest to North Franklin. If we were to do some type of addition to the rec center or, uh, pickleball and a family restroom or something like that, personally, I would kind of like to flip the entrance of, uh, the rec center, but, uh.
The fact that one thing that we were talking about the other day, I really want what you guys discussed and stuff, but at the same time, we need to figure out what, you know, how we're gonna get the money. And I think this is one of those things that it should be a really good investment for the town.
And that could include purchase of property. It could include paving and it could, you know, if you're talking new building, you're probably talking three million if you probably end up.
I know. I think for right now, just the land for me especially.
Yeah, move on to next item. Land on Mill Lane, and we don't really have a proposed use for it, but it's seven acres there that we originally purchased for the passenger rail location. There's a trail plant from the Aquatic Center to downtown Cambria to go through there. Property has a small amount of floodplain on it and it has steep slopes. And right now it just kind of serves as a natural area. Staff doesn't really have any, you know, planned use for outside of the trail that's going through there. Like I say, I, I do think the steep slope probably makes it a little difficult to develop. Um, you know, we could put a passenger trail station on it. We definitely could. Um, we had drawings of a passenger station on it and there was a lot of retaining wall work being done with it, but you could definitely put it on there. Uh, but like I say, if you're talking about putting a building on it, you're probably talking about retaining walls.
Well, it's, I mean, there's no need to even discuss putting a passenger rail location on it, station on it, because it's, it's not, it's not gonna go on that original plant anywhere. It's gonna be downtown, it's gonna be in Cambria.
This is a piece of property that, like I say, staff doesn't really have a, necessarily a planned use for outside the trail.
Can it be used? Uh, it's seven acres, it's a lot of land.
What's that?
Can you use, can you use some of the land for public works or is that also because of the floodplain?
I, I think, I think it would, number one, I think it's too small because they need fifteen to twenty and, and we don't want to split them up into three or four places, I don't think. Um, also the fact that the slopes there are almost prohibitive to have a, a big complex like that.
It's almost like you can't get there from here.
Do you ever get that any money?
You can build retaining walls and get a passenger station in and a platform. I think you could do that. To get a whole complex with a dozen buildings, I think that's probably prohibitive the way it's sloped.
Do we ever get any money back for the repayment for us purchasing this land?
We have not. We paid two hundred thousand for the project.
And have you, do you guys ever ask for any of the money on their?
We, we have not. The state did mention the possibility of reimbursing us for that when the, out of, if there's extra money from the, the station. Um, if, in all honesty, they might actually have extra money if they go to Cambria, but I think that's a cheaper option than what they were looking at.
I, I can assure you that will be addressed with them. We just, there has not been enough particularly up until we go, we had no idea where it was gonna go. You know, and so, so I think that's certainly a possibility. I would not want, now that doesn't include the, uh, the overflow parking lot that we bought, does it?
No, it doesn't.
So that's just that, uh, that land that we bought in good faith that that's where the station was gonna be. So I, I think that's certainly something that with the connections Kevin and I have and we know so, it may be such that it can at least be placed on the agenda for them to discuss the refund of it.
That's really good.
The potential uses that have been kicked around but are, are really just kind of out there.
The mountain, mountain park or bike park?
Park, uh, potentially or, you know, Boy Scouts, the nature trail through there. Uh, you know, I mean, it, it is one that is with the slope, but again, so there really hasn't been any serious talk about what kind of facility could you put there.
I really like the mountain bike park, that one school.
Especially the trail next to it.
Yeah.
Had competition over today, uh, Bentonville, Arkansas, they have plenty of trails off of their main course or something like. People use that. A lot of, a lot of traffic.
You know, from where we are getting the funding now.
Mm-hmm.
[laughing].
Right, the Walmart.
Walmart.
They built one in Bentonville.
Any other discussion on this? Like I say, I think we're open to ideas, but it's just a, a asset that we have that has some potential, I think.
Well, we were talking about, you know, recreational and we want to continue to do, you know, provide things and make Christians for what Christians are today and, and find places like, Tim, that you can really think about. Remember, we have really had our childhoods, but that our kids that are building their childhoods right now and their memories will be forever lasting. And those things that you sometimes didn't take a lot of money, those are the things that really you can remember sometimes. And I think that's why I keep going back to the back, because I used to run the bike all over the place and everything, but I still think that things like that is what makes Christians, or maybe it can make Christians for, um, a special place for a lot of people.
The, yeah, and so even, even, you know, you got the mountain bike idea, but there's also folks that, uh, or, or youngsters who are in the remote controlled cars and.
Yeah.
Sort of have a little remote controlled car race course or something for, for those who, uh, aren't athletically gifted, so to speak.
Maybe there's like a drone thing or whatever.
Or a drone course, yeah. So, so maybe there's other, other, uh, joint things that can be done inside a, uh, because seven acres is a, is a pretty good chunk of land and so. Some other, other avenues other than just all ball related sporting ventures in the town.
I like the recreational part of it.
Like that's what you mentioned for recreation. Do you know, I think that lot's parking, we're, we're not that much of that, kind of bike, it's not the trail. Bike, biking's a big thing for here. We have that one really cool bike house that goes through here, which the name's Joseph D. B.
Bike about seventy-six?
Yeah. So.
I mean, I think one of the things that we think about is, you know, I was just thinking about how the Reinert Park is going to start construction. And I'm thinking, you know, for the longest time, Christiansburg has been the destination for all these county people to show up. You know, they all come to Christiansburg, even to the Little Park. Depot Park has gotten tremendous amount of people coming in in the last years because of the work that has been done in there, so.
And isn't the bike thing connected to Brush Mountain, Kevin? Didn't you, we, before I left the commission, we, we had a presentation about that.
Right. The mountain bike skills park in Blacksburg attached to the Brush Mountain Trail. So the Huckleberry Trail, uh, our organization helped do the first master plan for that. Surprising that it's been owned by four entities and it's not a master plan. Um, but the concept, it's a lot of trails, like I mentioned Bentonville and Knoxville, that you have your main trail corridor, then you have other assets attached to it for multiple user types. So, uh, we already have that in a way right now with Coleridge Park. You can get offices made and have some other white form trails, other points of interest. Um, yeah, how do you provide other types of experience in connection with your main thoroughfare?
Uh, council chambers, I've mentioned this, uh, just staff had concerns with the corps of security for the access to the council dais. Elevated dais or courtroom divider wall's been mentioned by staff as potential improvement. Cost for an elevated dais, which is basically like maybe a eight inch or ten inch platform because it's gotta be load bearing, be between a hundred and two hundred thousand dollars. Um, which is, you know, a big number for what I think you'd be getting out of it, to be honest. Um, I think maybe a better option, if you do want some type of separation between the audience and council, would be a gated divider knee wall, basically in front of the council ta, table if you'd like, that desire council.
And this had come up a couple of years ago, I think Councilman Bishop had brought it up, uh, maybe.
Many years back.
Many years ago, then later on, uh, when we were doing some, uh, improvement, uh, during COVID, uh, we, we had looked at it as well and that's where we came up.
I've gotten an estimate back then of a hundred and fifty thousand. That's why I put a hundred and fifty to two hundred for the, the elevated. But like I say, that's gotta be load bearing.
I wouldn't, that wouldn't be on my high priority for sure. I'd rather spend the money buying land for the rec center or something else, probably worse.
I would think the gated divider at forty to fifty thousand would probably be a certain step. Because we have, and none of you were on council at the time, I was, but at one point in time, we have had citizens that have decided it was all right, we were going into a budget discussion, came out of the audience and decided it was okay for them to stay behind us and to cover our shoulders while we discuss these things, which we, we did have the police chief remove them from the premises.
We've had people come to council and at a rezoning, this year before I came here, they told council that if they rezoned a piece of property, they were gonna come back and kill everybody on town council. They, they were removed from the podium pretty quickly, but, uh, that, that happens occasionally.
I mean, like I already know, I had life threats on Facebook and everything else in the past and I had not done anything, so I, I personally, not that, I don't think our security is risky all the time, but I personally feel like.
So what, what I would do then, I would, I would have an agreement with the chief of police that if anybody steps foot past the front row of chairs, they will immediately remove them, period. Now, we have times when people have petition, they ask permission to come and bring them. That's one thing, but just to walk up, pass that first line, I have no hesitancy if, if council agrees, just have the police just remove them.
I, I think that's a, uh, an appropriate measure to save us forty to fifty thousand or a hundred and fifty to two hundred at the moment.
Do I look at trying to put some type of marking on the floor through there?
I just think wherever the podium is, you, you know, the podium is the.
Something so they know.
You know, you, you're not allowed past the podium, no one's allowed past the podium and, and.
Maybe assign no, uh, no citizens past podium?
Yeah.
How old is this carpet or the carpet over there?
How old is it? As old as the building, two thousand and three, two thousand and three.
So, I mean, one thing that we can make is maybe change the color of the flooring on that section, you know, so it, it, it shows that there is a different.
That, that would probably look better than they put tape on or something.
Oh, yeah. That's what I was saying. Or maybe, you know, you can outline the backdrop to be a darker or different color than the rest of the room. I mean, that's just, uh, a concept, so you can just say, you know, there is a little bit of a difference, so you can tell someone, because it's very hard to tell someone, oh, just, I don't know, I just think the paper, and the carpet doesn't look, to me, I mean, it was gray for the time being or whatever, but if we can do a little bit of a change and, uh, that is not gonna be fifty thousand dollars.
That, that wouldn't be much at all, you know?
Yeah.
Should I look at, how, trying to have some type of different color carpet put from the council table?
Yeah, or maybe, uh, maybe the, the vinyl stuff that is.
The laminate?
The laminate stuff that looks so nice nowadays, I mean, it's inexpensive and we're put down, like at the shop the other day, one dollar and sixty five, one dollar and forty cents for a plank and it's really nice, it's commercial gray.
Maybe navy blue?
What's the town color?
Yeah, that's, that's why I said navy blue.
I also think that the podium to put here.
I don't particularly like the podium sitting there either.
I just like the lighting there.
Well, and here's the reason from a security standpoint, back where we had it on the side, that immediately blocks access forward. The only other direct access they have is come up, let's, the security center. So, I mean, it's, it's fine. I don't think that that's the ideal position, but I, I've heard people that sit behind that podium so they can't see council when someone, when the podium and the people sit in there talking. It's, it's a, it's a meat or fish, whatever you wanna do, but, but I mean, if, if, if council is comfortable with, uh, they're working with the police chief and the police department, they might step across, you know, past the podium or the, the first line of chairs.
I do think, what, I mean, I see it all the time too, where most of the people, I've never seen anybody really doing anything for the time I have been here. Even if they don't like you or whatever, they kind of, you know, but they do come up to us to shake our hands or give us a paper or something. I mean, are you against us? Cause I have found it.
Once, once we go into session though, once session starts, I, I, and, and, yeah, but, but once session starts, once he, he hits the gavel, we're, we're safe until it's over. We, no one should approach our, our bench once we go into session.
A lot of times people come up after the meetings and that's fine, but, but to disrupt a meeting, come forward like that is just, I, I don't think it's, uh, I don't think it's something we should allow.
Cause I don't remember having an issue with that. That, what is bringing this to the attention right now? Cause you said that Bishop Road disappeared ago, but now, have you brought it up again recently? Is this an issue for you right now?
The issue for me is security. I mean, just like I said years back, I always wondered why we were setting, where we're setting and people can come and jump over the desk and get you if they want, of course, they, they might jump one time towards me.
They can die anyway.
Well, they, they might jump one time towards me and that's gonna be.
I, anyway.
The board's saying like across the.
I just think we need something.
Government, there's been a lot of safety improvements.
Yeah, we have.
For public meetings. So I, I think that it's a germane topic. I know the county went through, redesigned their space for security purposes as well. Um, oh, you guys are crawling underneath. I think that's probably why we have that conversation now. It's way after. I think that's probably why we have that conversation now, uh, it's way ahead of the safety.
No, it's like.
Lots of cases, the situations.
I just think of safety, I mean, anybody can do anything to you outside quarters.
Right, right.
I, I mean, we have the chief of police here, we typically have one or two, we're on the third floor. It's not like you are on the first floor. I actually feel a lot more safer in here than outside.
Like Garber County actually has bulletproof, uh, dividers, I don't know if you knew that, but those, those are.
I didn't know there was bulletproof.
It was a pretty, it was a pretty big investment for them too.
That's what I just said.
I think I, I like, I, I mean, I think I'm okay with where we're at, where Mike, it's, it's, you know, we, you know, the, once, once you hit the gavel that we're, you know, we're. People aren't approached the, the, the council bench.
Yeah, I think probably first few meetings, probably have to give warning, notify them that do not approach without permission. You know, cause somebody don't know, they come from somewhere else and they start walking toward you, you know, you don't want to tackle.
Well, most of the time they walk toward us before, after the meeting.
Yeah, well, after the meeting.
During the meeting is, you know, I don't have a problem after the meeting.
I don't, no, it's doing.
But we have had people approach after the meeting in such a way that they have been escorted out of the building.
Well, that's what they get.
Yeah.
So now it sounds like, yeah, mayor, chief, if you have a contentious issue, then I imagine you can communicate that, uh, at the start of the meeting. This is the decorum of the space.
Is this because my husband brought flowers to me the other day? Because he got it, I just, I'm trying to think of times where this has happened in the last five years. And I don't recall somebody coming to the back or doing anything that I feel unsafe being in town council.
Yeah, but the, the issue is you shouldn't have, we shouldn't, we should be planning for not waiting till something happens. And I think that's what we're doing here is we're planning for if, it, you know, we're, we're doing planning, we're not, we're not reacting to, in a response or to something. It's, the safety of us is, is the people that sit up there and, you know full well that, that sometimes citizens come up and they.
They're angry.
Yeah, they're not always pleasant to certain ones of us and.
I think that comes with being a public servant. I mean, we have gotten more bullying than anything else and I've never done anything bad.
But we're, we're, but we, we, we also are, should expect a certain amount of protection and, and respect for, you know, the amount of stuff that we go through.
Yeah, I mean, just because we're public servants don't mean we should be setting ourselves up for any kind of injury or death or whatever. I mean, sometimes we're looking down.
Public service is not public targets.
Well, I agree, I mean, that's, that's like saying the police are public service, I think should be for our gain. I don't, no, I'm sorry, that's.
So if, if that's the consensus of council, that's what I would do.
The, the flooring, the painting or what are we doing?
Council desire, uh, some type of.
Just bring us ideas in court.
Right.
There you go.
And I'm okay with that.
Laminate down and, and stencil it, no trespassing.
No. Yeah, so in the interim, in the interim, there's, there's the policy and then if you bring us a, a valid price for, it doesn't seem like we're breaking the bank to, to do it.
So people know where the line is at.
Yeah. So I guess I'm just thinking.
Unless you have a sign with it.
Right, oh, and if we spend this money, I'm not saying it'll look bad, I'm not even saying I'm against it, I'm just saying if we spend that money, I'm just curious what it helps us do.
Yeah, I mean.
Have a boundary of like, don't pass the podium, what else does that help people register? Cause the podium is kind of a pretty clear landmark.
Well, I fancy if we move the podium.
Well, if we move the podium, then, you know, we just say like, pass the front row chairs, kind of what I would. You know, I'm going to get, you don't understand, but.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure we need to spend money on flooring personally, but you know.
I mean, I'm not against us getting like a quote, I just don't, if it's, if it's not a barrier that goes up for our safety, like a bulletproof box, is I don't think we need to do. I'm just saying, if it's not something that's like a barrier between us, if it's a visual cue, we could probably just give them the cue and say, don't approach council and that's a pretty clear thing. But that's, I'm going to go through the effort of like repaying the ordinance. It still costs kind of money.
I mean, I'd rather have, you know, they do sell the glass, uh, bulletproof studies this morning, you can probably have something like this very small to the, I mean, that's not.
Bulletproof if you want it.
Want it over here.
A bone, you're going to have it done.
Uh, I don't know, I just feel, cause I, we, we, we just went through COVID and it's just like, I'm happy to have this conversation like this. Uh, not to be in another box again.
Well, like I say, you know, after a bulletproof desk or something, that's well, it's probably going to be a little costly, but you'll probably, probably put Kevlar or something on the.
I mean, can this be made, like, you can probably get like, um, some kind of materials put underneath the desk.
Probably could get like Kevlar or something to put.
Yeah.
But maybe.
It's already protected in the front, I mean, below, below the table level, it's already covered.
Well, it's wood.
That's the other part, well, it's just wood, wood doesn't cover anything. We can get some metal or something, bulletproof studies.
Yeah, I'd be more concerned waist up.
Yeah.
You know.
No, because you can always, I mean, you have, they have to go through the chief of police, they have to go through Randy and everybody else, so.
Yeah, I don't know.
I will proceed then.
I think let's keep going, let's go and get us some.
I will proceed and discuss this.
Some other ideas.
With Randy and, uh, Chief Ramsey and his staff, to understand the, the boundaries that we're looking for. All right, that's it. Others?
Potential projects, uh, the downtown parking area that we recently bought, there's a money budgeted to take down the drive through for a major patching of the downtown parking area. Police department has a desire to fence a portion of this area and slightly reconfigure the aisles and aisle looks. That's just something I'll mention, um, it would probably be a capital project. Chief Ramsey kind of sketched out how he would like it to look for me and, uh, I'll, I'll be glad to show you to, to you at some point, but I'll try to get cost estimates on it. But I'll just ask, are there any other ideas for that area?
Farmer's market. Where the drive through is.
Yeah, that.
But there is, um.
That's an unworkable solution, there's not enough parking.
You just go a hundred parking spaces.
Well, yeah, but how many par, how many spaces does the, uh, farmer's market?
Doesn't look like that many.
Well, yeah, but you gotta, sure, you gotta have people to get in and out, I think that.
Well, where do you have the parking on Hickok Street?
No, that's why it's best at the rec center and should stay there.
Okay, so, but we're just doing this whole thing on Hickok Street downtown for a farmer's market?
Well, it doesn't say, it says a structure, which could be a, 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 a structure that you could stroll down to eat lunch under, a covered thing. It doesn't have to be for a farmer's market, if I'm not mistaken on this. Am I mistaken, Andrew?
I'm trying to figure out what's the purpose of the thing is.
It was funded for a farmer's market.
The government statement stands, we have to leave the lawn on this to, to function as a farm.
It could have other uses too.
It, it could, but it, yeah, but I mean, for us to, to be able to leave the funding.
Spending a lot of money on something that really and truly should still stay at the rec center because of the, the parking and, and visibility, but that's up to.
And I agree with you, I, I mean, I do think that the best location for the rec center, but the problem with that is, once again, what was the reason why, was it created? And that was one of my points here, what was the farmer's market's purpose? If the farmer's market's purpose was to bring people downtown, then I have been speaking with, you know, Kim the other day. And asking for Andrew to talk to Brad Everly and Randy and giving them directions to talk to Brad Everly and see if there is a possibility of bringing it downtown at least once a month for now. Because if the long-term motion is for them to come back downtown, they need to make their presence again. But if that's not the, their goal, I would really like to know, what is it that?
The original goal of the farmer's market, eleven years ago, when council instructed me to see, to have establishing a farmer's market, was to bring people downtown.
Okay.
But then when you have to look at it, you bring them downtown or, I mean, what are you bringing them down to? There's no real businesses that benefit from the increased traffic it's causing.
I agree.
So, you know, then, you know, when we had to move it up to, uh, we moved it up in anticipation of the Hickok Street Dallas Drainage Project. And, and I think if you have, if you have talked to the vendors, the vendors that have been to both markets, been to both places, they much prefer the recreation center.
I agree.
And, you know, do you want to, do you want to risk the continuity of the operation to move it downtown once a month? I'm not sure, cause then you're going to get people, well, I went to the farmer's market, it wasn't there and they moved it downtown and. See, what you, what you get with that farmer's market now is you get, you know, there must be a blue half million people that live behind the rec center and all those subdivisions. And they're turning right there to come home and they see the, they see the farmer's market. And I think from a traffic standpoint, it has been more successful up there. Now, if we determine at some point to leave it there, and I think, I think to move it, if we were to consider moving it to that parking lot we just purchased. It would be even less desirable than on Hickok Street.
Why do you think that?
Well, it, it takes one, about sixty spaces in order to currently occupy where it's at, so you're going to use up a significant amount of it, um, of the parking, that new parking lot.
And you hope to bring it on a Saturday, so I think.
We can't bring it on Saturday.
You never, we would never compete on a Saturday.
No, that's why, that's why Thursday was selected because Blacksburg and everybody else has Saturday markets. And the vendors that come to us come to them too, and they said, we don't have staff to do both. And with Blacksburg Farmer's Market is pretty successful, you know, they said, if we had to pick and choose, then we'd go to Blacksburg.
So you don't think that that area would be better of a community space than Hickok Street? The drive-through location, cause I mean, it's big.
I get it, but so, I, I think if you go back to what we said, uh, vibrant downtown was my choice of words, but, but the downtown, so like, I agree.
You need to bring them to something.
I love, I love the location at the rec center. I, I'd go most every, you know, I'm looking here, we.
You're not going to market it, brother?
You're being biased because you need close by, I'm messing with you.
You're absolutely correct, I am being biased, cause I live, you know, a quarter, a quarter of a mile.
No, I need to close it downtown, so I'm biased too.
But I also, but I also have a passion for developing downtown and I think that if the, the more events, the more things we do down here. Then it, it entertains the potential for people who are retail oriented to go, okay, you, you as a town are doing things to bring folks down to see your florist, to see other, other avenues. So for that reason alone, um, I, I like the Hickok Street location because, um, and again, I, I'm biased for being at the rec center. However, um, I'm also, as, again, as a civic leader, think that we need to do things to entertain the downtown location and that is, that's one, putting it on Hickok Street. And then it's, it's a matter of, when we make it a priority again, then the people who are charged with running the thing. Need to put the same amount of effort as we do at the rec center to get the vendors there and to, to make it where it's a viable thing. We're striping College Street to add parking on College Street, you know, it's already parking there, but we're going to put some stripes down to tell people, hey, don't forget, here's, was it eight or ten parking spots we came up with on?
Along College.
Along College, but people don't park there because there's no stripes to tell them you can park. And that was part of that survey that, uh.
But I'm confused, so the farmer's market does a lot of entertainment, uh, they do music, they bring Christmas in June or whatever that's called. I mean, they do a lot of entertainment, they bring people there. And I mean, they have come along from a place that there was barely anything there to something where they have really tried to figure out what is it that people want. And I do think that if you want that downtown, you would want that downtown to be in a place where it's visible, not in a place that is in a closed industry, like Hickok Street. That's why I'm saying that the farmer's market, if the main purpose was to create it to bring people to the downtown area, needs to be downtown. And where is that place? You need a place that is visible to everybody and that you have parking spaces, now you have the parking spaces. Now you have a drive-through that can be very visible from every location.
So can, maybe we use that facility and try to develop like a food truck Tuesday? Can bring them in that parking lot, so people aren't going to be, vendors aren't going to be set up all day, your food trucks will be sitting there, you can come in to that area to the various three or four food trucks. Have them there from noon to, or eleven to six, you know, it's just.
Is that what we're really gonna, what our desire is to have food trucks all through the town instead of having places that actually have food places? To be, you know, I really think that.
We don't have any places downtown right now that, that are existing, that are conducive to being restaurants.
We can encourage that.
If we don't, huh?
We can encourage that to happen.
We can encourage, but unless you're willing to set a precedent by offering tax incentives, which we have never done before, and once we do that. Then people will say, well, where's mine for developing two years ago? So we're opening a can of worms to do that, we can encourage it all we want, but the fact of the matter is, the buildings that are downtown, you know, we own this building and the police station. That's it, that's all we own, the rest of them are privately owned. And until they're willing to expand and develop and, and make an effort to bring some of these restaurants and, and snack shops or whatever back downtown, it's no point. You only own two, but you only own two buildings.
Yeah, I agree with you and that's why I'm against the downtown, you know, hiring the downtown person, because I think there are factors there that hiring another person can't correct, you know?
There, there are attitudes that need to be changed for some of our business, uh, some of our property owners downtown. And until we can, until we can remedy that or they pass away, I, I don't know either, but certainly anything we do is, is, is certainly money better spent than on tourism.
Well, and there is, because of the governmental offices that we have down there, I'm not talking about the town itself, because they, we are not, um, pushing for those type of people to be down here. But I tell you, we were getting, we were going to get really good rental income from lawyers downtown. And so, I mean, there is a big need, we have lawyers coming over there all the time trying to figure out if you guys have a close, we're here, we'll rent a space. I mean, that's the real need down here, lawyers of spaces and so. I don't know how to change that, I mean, obviously there is no change.
We focus this one here, what are you looking for from council on this downtown parking?
Oh, I'm just, I'm just trying to have it there as another potential proj, project, open to any ideas and, and to kind of get any other projects that they might want to talk about.
No, my idea is let's just start, let's just start with trying to figure out what are the, all of the permits that you need to get or whatever, you need to send letters to or whatever. Just to make sure that, um, we got all that cleaned out and out of the way to get it rid of it.
We are, we are the builder, we are the driver.
I saw the building was still in question and so, that was the reason why it wasn't a clean title completely, I'm doubt, but anyway. My opinion is to get all that done and knock it down and make it clean for now, because at least if you have a clean space, you know what you got.
It's more nodding than that one.
And then who is to say, we'll set up on a van down there where there is, I mean, the museum, you said the other day, um, they closed down the entrance and everything else, police officers were there and everything. And, you know, they have the tractor trailer and everything, so, and they had hundreds of people there, I'm sure. How many people do you have there, if you don't mind me asking? Yeah, but I mean, it was used for a lot of people to come down, so they can't come.
And I wrote this there, yeah.
But I think, if you have not the building that it might be initially.
Well, I mean, we, we are, you know, we are moving forward with the, the contract of design and the final construction, you know, in, in downtown, on Hickok Street.
But we just said no farmer's market there.
No, I mean, the direction the council that I'm aware of, unless it goes back to council and there's a new vote.
It was that, that was like a professional vote of council.
Cause we really need to reject the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar ARC grant.
Well, you guys said that you could do, it, it could be, uh.
It needs, it needs to be a farmer's market structure.
It needs to be a farmer's.
It does, absolutely.
So. Use it for other things, you actually can, because we're doing the farmer's market there.
Well, my understanding, you had said before that it was a community space.
It is, absolutely, it needed to get.
And so it didn't have to be a farmer's market, I mean, it didn't have to be used for the farmer's market, but it could have, the money could be used for anything, including, could be lights, it could be, you know, fixing the sidewalk. but it could have, the money could be used for anything, including, could be lights, it could be, you know, fixing the sidewalk for that community space or whatever, but it didn't have to be a farmer's market.
I believe that we would probably not be in compliance with our grant.
I would really like to see that contract.
I'll leave it up to Andrew and Reed and Randy, if, if, if they deemed that we would be in violation, if we're not, if we don't build a farmer's market structure, then we'll reject, now, the two hundred seventy-five dollars is gonna be, two hundred seventy-five dollars, you're gonna build it, because the figures I saw at some point were in the five, six, seven hundred dollars, thousand dollars.
As you recall, that we are leveraging the drainage project, for most of the finishes on, so the stamped concrete, the brick patterned sidewalk, that's going to be, that is gonna mimic what we have on, uh, on Main Street, would be continued on Hickok Street.
And from what, yeah.
And, and so, so that, and that would be, and that is actually part of the drainage, uh, project within that budget. So what, what we are, what we've been able to leverage that project to minimize the cost for, because we had originally applied for five hundred thousand dollars for the A R C grant, and we were awarded two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, so, right, I mean, as we get into the design of the structure, you know, that, that, we, we would know the final cost of that.
That it will be, correct me if I'm mistaken, but it stands to be significantly more than the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. Because two hundred seventy-five thousand, thousand includes the study and the drawings and the renditions and the engineering and all that stuff, doesn't it?
It includes, uh, mo- most of the design costs are, there was some additional cost that, that council had approved through the-
The design costs, but doesn't-
The design costs, but then that, yeah, so the rest would be towards, uh, construction of, of, about a six hundred square foot, um, structure, I'd have to get things-
Yeah, touch, right.
Uh, I'm just, structure. Okay.
Pretty good.
So on this, uh, I would say, yes, clean the area, knock the buildings, patch the holes, let us know where they wanna put the fence, really go find, and then try for parking, and that's what I would say, we do it in the parking area right now.
That's pretty much brilliant.
Yeah.
Uh, the money will be there available in Jan- in, uh, July, so basically, July, I'll plan to go ahead and get the building going then.
Do we have to get any approval from the bank, or are we good to go ahead, or?
We, we own it.
A lot happening in July. You know, I've exhausted a lot of capital projects, a lot of content here.
Any, any other capital projects you'd like to, to bring up in anything?
No, I think I'm mostly concerned about the, the, the future of the fire, um, recruitment, and firemen recruitment and police officers, um, I think above anything else, public safety regarding that aspect is probably some of my biggest concerns, how do you, do you work with that in the county in between, so, especially when they got the money and we don't, so.
Well, and, and to reiterate what Johanna said, in, in discussion with, uh, with Chief Ramsey, the applicant pool of qualified officers or potential officers is stronger now than it's been in the last five years. I, I think he told me they had a pool of about fifteen or eighteen that were really good, you almost have to look for a reason not to hire them, than, you know, than a reason to hire them, so, that's why I suggested we increase the, the police, uh, personnel to seventy-five patrol officers, because if we can get them now and get them trained, then it does, it, the cost does go up for a time, but then as retirements take place, then those salaries, you know, you revert back and you're not paying a price for a shift.
We have fifty right now, right?
Sixty-five.
What is the optimal amount that, that we'd like to see?
I, I said seventy-five, and, and keeping in mind that in the next three or four years, you've got at least ten, uh, ten retirements, so-
Yeah, I mean, are you saying you wanna hire them, any, so when some drop off, you still have enough, or you want to bring it up and keep it at seventy-five?
I'd like to, I'd like to keep the auth- the authorized to seventy-five, doesn't mean you have to hire all seventy-five, but if you get a pool of candidates and you've got five or six that you really like, you're gonna hire two, then, you know, why let somebody else get them? Why not, if we can take advantage of them, and, and we're getting applications from, from certified officers now, which we, we never got before, or not in a long time. So, I, I think, I think that's what I was looking at, at wanting to do, of course, that's like council action to do, this was a suggestion that while, while, while the fish are running, we probably need to catch as many of them as we can, knowing that we're gonna need every one of them within three years.
Now, they are paid, but what about the firemen? Right now you have, how many pay firemen right now?
Three. I think it's three full-time, and we've approved another one.
Yes.
Then we go to four.
So that's four.
And that's mainly to cover the day.
They have about fifty of them, right, right now, that volunteer?
Forty-seven volunteers, I think, and I think they have actually increased, they, they held at that number for almost since inception. They have since increased it now, I don't know whether it was to forty-five or fifty, but that's just to be able to take on the volunteers. Um, they went to fifty, so, it's, it's just, it's, it's stepping.
And let's first say, within the next ten years, you lose twenty-five of them. That's where I need to figure out how we are going to come up to that number, and I actually think it's gonna be a lot greater than twenty-five.
A lot of our fire volunteers are agents.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, and, and at, at the end of that, with-
And within twenty years, I cannot really tell you, probably you're gonna need probably at least forty, or if not more.
No, and at, at some point in time over the years, we need to face the fact, we are going to have to go full-time, twenty-five. Now, do we have to do it tomorrow? No, as long as we can continue this route, we're kinda prolonging the inevitable, but to get us through some of these other projects, this is the route we need to take.
I have another question, I know that many of our firemen are volunteers with the fire station. Do they, when they're at work right now, for example, one of them, if they work and this is their shift that they're working, if they get called for a fire emergency, do they get paid for those hours, or do they not?
That's to the employer, isn't it?
Yeah, it's up to each individual employer.
It's up to the individual employer, now, unfortunately, we have, we have two firefighters that are full-time with the town that are not paid as firefighters, they work close enough, and, you know, it's the working relationship that have, a lot of, a lot of the places around still will allow the, the fire department, because they're not called out as frequently as-
Rescue.
As rescue squad, so there, there's a, there's a decent relationship, and we have a couple that have retired from their real jobs that are working in, working downtown, and they have the ability to go also. Twenty years from now, I'll be, I'll be ninety-six, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I'll be here to worry about.
I'm just, just planning, I hear, or maybe is, uh, maybe there is, um, I don't know if you can even do that, but let's first say, if you get a public works employee or any other department, or, and Warren wants to volunteer, but, anyway, but if you have any of those people that want to volunteer or whatever, gives them the ability to, you know, pay for those hours, um, maybe that is an option for recruitment. And will that be having to go through the town council?
There, there are issues, I mean, and I think that if we had, and I think we do have some volunteer firemen that work-
Yeah, we do.
Public works, however, depending on where they work, now, if they're working on a road crew and they're somewhere on the other side of the, the town, then they can't necessarily break free and get all the way across town, but I mean, I, I, it's, it's all set up with the, with the department heads and what they, what they, uh, will allow and what they won't allow, but they are spread out all over town, the majority of our public works people are.
But I think that can be a, a really good, um, thing, that if you hire somebody and say, hey, um, there is the, the chances, if you want to participate with the volunteer, you know, be a volunteer with the fire department, that there is the ability to, um, give them that, that space and time if they needed to be in a fire or something, and, and pay, and that can be a benefit.
We've, we've talked about something similar with Valerie before, and there comes a point where there's, there's tax reasons why, because we talked about incentivizing and giving, uh, gas credit cards and all this stuff, and, and you can't-
Yeah, but that's not a town employee, I'm just talking about a town employee.
Yeah, but even with town employees, we, we talked about incentivizing that, and there's, there's something to do, human resource wise, and, and tax wise and stuff, that she, I can't remember exactly what it was.
There, there's some, there's some problem with it, I, I don't remember the exact quotation she used, but, uh, even paying our volunteers, there was a-
We had talked about it once before, and-
If you're paying them, they're not volunteers anymore.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you look at it too, I mean, if you bring them in, and you have to send them to school for a, for a period of time, they're not really doing town, the town function, which you have them to do, so, a lot in there, I mean, that's just, yeah.
The town has, all two hours allotted for employees, right, each year?
We have, we have eight, eight hours community service that you can take from your, your regular.
Um, I mean, yeah.
How many employees do we have?
Two, two sixty-five, four times, like, every third.
We're all gonna have fire, police, firemen, fire women at the end of the year.
Don't worry.
All right.
Vice Mayor, can you close this meeting?
Again, Charles.
Mayor stepped down, will you, uh?
Don't set me up like that.
Do we wanna try and do some type of prioritization?
Oh, no, oh, what?
I don't know, do you need much more than what you got?
We all got, yeah, we're pretty much done with it.
We're trying to, we've been done.
They've been trying to close it out.
Yeah, I think if you and, Randy, if you and me and Andrew chat, uh, afterwards, uh, some Friday, the communication, chat through and talk about, what steps you need for the decision making with this group, but it's, it's kinda like, there's some information needed for fire and rescue, getting the house in foot there, and getting public works complex for property data together, but yeah, we can definitely do this, if you breathe a call and make sure you got a bunch of, it all sorted, covered a lot of ground today.
Yes, we do. But you, you, I think you do give us a synopsis of all this.
Right, we'll, we'll capture these things, and I think there'll be some, looking at this document too, to see where these can fall in here.
You know, it's a distant meeting we do during, of view of the, the discussion.
Right, yes, sir.
By seven o'clock.
By seven o'clock Monday morning.
All righty, uh, are you, uh, we covered what we need to cover, and the questions we've asked?
Yep.
So, Kevin, thank you again for your time.